Test, test, test.
We're good.
All right, good morning. We're going to call the regularly scheduled Planning Commission for July 13th to order. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Ms. Leidar, are there any announcements, changes to the agenda?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Advertizing public hearing presentation open request, item number two, PDR 0564 CGR 2 Hillwood Expansion Revised General Development Plan with Reson. There is a revised stipulations, revised motion and title, no included, all owners, and is attached to the agenda memo. Item number three, PDR 2205 CP Linger Lodge Road Reson and Preliminary Site Plan, and there is a public comment and revised preliminary site plan attached to the agenda memo. And this case is going to be moved to presentation schedule.
I'm sorry, which one?
Item number three.
Three, okay.
The Linger Lodge.
Thank you very much. All right, Ms. Schenk, is there anything from the county attorney's office? Thank you very much. All right, we're going to go ahead and go to citizen comments. And this is an opportunity to speak on items that are not on today's agenda. Should you wish to make a comment on an item that is on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity when that application's being heard. So with that clarification, is there anybody who wishes to come forward and make a statement on, again, anything that is not on today's agenda? Again, if it's on today's agenda, you'll have an opportunity, but if you would, please come forward, state your name, your county of residence, and you'll have three minutes.
Yes, good morning. Name is Mark Van Dery. Live in Manatee County. And I do speak on behalf of the Wardeline Road Preservation Group.
Is this related to an application that's being heard today?
No, this, not yet. I'll do that later.
Okay.
Right now, just in general terms, I've heard some of the Planning Commission members, and specifically yourself, Mr. Carnley, referring to the purpose of the Planning Commission to minimize or avoid having lawsuits against the county and the Board of County Commissioners. And I would like for, on your future agenda, to revisit that purpose because I think your job, I think your purpose is to do planning for the county of Manatee. And specifically, I think that we are behind the eight ball on planning. You're not planning, you're reacting. The staff is overwhelmed with the number of cases that they're being handled. They're not able to do a proper job. You've set them up. They're good people. There's a good organization. You've set them up to fail, okay? And that's wrong. That's wrong. And one way to remedy this is to just slow things down a bit. The timing is not right for a lot of the rezoning that's taking place. Not just a matter of compatibility, but the timing is not right. And the timing is not right because the staff is completely overwhelmed. They are not planning. They are reacting. They're checking off boxes. They're not doing a thorough job of planning. You have the county attorneys to take care of lawsuits against the county commissioners and the B O C C and the county in general, which is a very important thing to do. Don't misunderstand me. Our taxpayer money needs to be put to the best use it possibly can instead of being spent frivolously on defending against, in many cases frivolous lawsuits from different sources, including a lot of the developers who seem to have a free reign of things. So that's my request for future agenda items is to please revisit your purpose, focus on planning. I think that would go a long way to help out the citizens of this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there about anybody else who wishes to come forward, make a comment regarding items that are not on today's agenda? Okay, seeing no one come forward, we're going to close the public comment portion of the hearing. And I overlooked an item on the agenda, which is the minutes for June 8th, 2023. For the commissioners, have you had an opportunity to review these minutes? If so, any clarifications, changes, or the chair will consider a motion?
Just move to approve minutes.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Smock. Is there a second? If you would, please use the app. Okay, we have a second by Mr. Turner. If you would, go ahead and, and please, please vote. All right. All right, with that, we have a motion passed with a four to zero with Mr. DeLezline, Mr. Roth, and Ms. Kebba absent, so four to zero. Thank you. All right, going on to the next item, which is a presentation upon request, I believe. Sorry, I had it on the wrong page. So the next item is actually quasi judicial, so let's go ahead and swear everybody in. If you would, please rise to be sworn in if you intend to speak on any of the applications being heard today. And as is typical, if it's an item that's a presentation upon request, typically the presumption is that it's perfunctory. And we'll open it up with a brief explanation, and then we'll go to public comment to see if there are any specific items that need to be addressed. So with that in mind, Ms. Leidar, can you please introduce item number one into the record?
Item number one, Z 2307 O'Reilly Auto Park Parish, William K. and Catherine L. Marsh owners. And it's a quasi judicial case. A reson of more or less 1.61 acres, generally located 200 feet southeast of U.S. 301 North on the north side of Fourhammer Road, and commonly known as 5851 Bella Road Parish, Manatee County, from agriculture suburban A1 to neighborhood commercial median MCM, and the case manager is Mr. Kevin Omen.
Very good, thank you. For the commissioners, have there been any ex parte communications regarding this application? Okay, seeing none disclosed. Who's the applicant? Who's, who do we have for the applicant? I'm sorry. Good morning. If you could, just briefly introduce your application, then we'll open it up for public comments. If there are any specific items we wish to delve a little deeper into.
Good morning. I'm Lori Viola from Stantec, and we're representing the future owners of the property at 5851 Bella Road. And it's a straight rezon from agriculture A1 to neighborhood commercial median.
And you've been sworn in?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right. So with that, it's a straight rezon, so I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on this application? Please come forward. All right. Good morning. If you could, state your name that you've been sworn in, your county of residence, please.
Yes, Cara Byers. I'm a resident of Parish, and yes, I've been sworn in.
Thank you very much.
I have two requests. One is, I literally live there on Bella Road, and this development will be out my front door. I'm not against, I'm not here to go against the development. I just have, like I said, two requests on this. The property will be on the west side of Bella Road. I will be on the east side of Bella Road. And so I would like to request that there be some oak trees on the backside of that property. So not just myself, but the other neighbors that are on this road. That we're not looking at a concrete building, and that we can have the trees. Also, the trees, as we know, also gives a cooling. As the sun comes down, the trees will also help to cool that little area. More importantly, the second request is speed bumps on our road. We already have cars that are coming down our road. Again, I'm not against the cars taking that little side road on Bella Road, but they're doing more than just taking the side road. They're speeding down that side road. And we have quite a few families that have very small children. And so for fun, sometimes I go out there and start counting the cars that drive by. So that would be my second request, as this is happening, whether it's one, possibly two, however you want to develop that. But if I can ask again for the speed bumps, just to keep the car slowed down for security and safety. Thank you.
Very good. And just for clarification, this is a straight rezon, so it's not even a requirement that they disclose the use. The applicant has disclosed the use on this one, but they'll be required to provide buffers, landscape buffers. So we'll get some information on that related to the speed bumps. That's a public right of way. And you might want to speak to county staff related to that. That's something that can't be tied to this project, so that would be a consideration separate and apart from this application. So Mr. Transportation person in the back, wave your hand. So that would be the person you speak with, so.
Okay, do you know his name?
It's a hyphenated name. I'm not sure what.
It's Prony for staff.
Okay, Prony.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you. Sorry, Prony. I didn't know which part of the hyphenated name is your last name, so. All right, anybody else wishing to come forward and speak to this application? Okay, seeing no one else come forward, we're going to close the public comment of this application. And for the applicant, can we please get some clarification regarding the compliance with the landscape buffers?
Sure. As we move into the future land use, site plan review stage, we will absolutely, you know, comply to all the land development codes, landscape buffers, and the access requirements.
Offhand, I'm not, I don't want to put you on the spot, but offhand, do you know that if trees are included in the landscape buffer?
If that's part of the code, they would be, yes.
Yes, ma'am. So, okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Leidar?
Yes, Mr. Rutledge.
Can I ask you a question, please? Let's just say, for example, that the code doesn't require a particular oak tree or circumcising and so forth. With the request of a resident, they brought that forward to you, would you find that consistent with general development of this particular product that you imagine there? But you wouldn't be opposed to it, right? And would you also be supportive of something that metered the traffic speed and volumes in some way, if that were something you could support? Would you be supportive of having reasonable kind of controls if it were asked of you? I appreciate that. I'm sure we'll remember that you were going to try to help us out. Thanks.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Let the record show Mr. Roth stepped into the hearing. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, we're going to close. Let me ask the applicant, is there a desire to make a closing statement or a rebuttal? Okay, applicant is waving no. Staff closing comments? Mr. Roth, how are you doing?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Fan board and guest and staff, my party. My name is Kevin Omen. I'm with Development Services, and I have been sworn in. I just want to add to the, oh, okay. I just want to add as well as to the northeast, as we said, I mentioned, so. Okay. I just wanted to add to the northeast, there are some commercial developments. If you don't mind.
Mr. Chair, I just want to make sure we ask Mr. Roth to disclose an ex parte communications before we vote.
It's important. Thank you.
So, there is neighborhood commercial services to the northeast, I don't want to say that area, as well as with this being the zoning that they are addressing, which is commercial and residential of the adjacent parcel, as well as in the area, when it comes in for final site plan, there will be a landscape buffer to be a little bit more mitigating that that works for that it will be compatible with those residents in the area, especially to the adjacent residential parcel to the north. So I hope that helps. And again, as the applicant stated, you know, there isn't anything that we can have confirmed here, but we are aware that those mitigating measures will be in place as we move forward with the residential comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Roth, before we go any further in the hearing, have you had any ex parte communications regarding the? Very good. Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, with that, the applicant has another opportunity to provide closing comments or make a rebuttal.
Can I make one comment about staff submission? First of all, I have total confidence in staff, and the first public statement was they're overworked. I suspect that's in every municipality, so we appreciate your hard work. And also, I feel confident in our staff that when they hear from the community that people have these concerns, I know it registers, and I know they watch it as it goes through. They only have the limit of the law. But I do think they're very sensitive to that, and I think they do work with our good developers and engineers in the area to do the best they can within certain guidelines. And so with Mr. Omen not working on it, I feel comfortable that you'll get a strong review of what's good for everybody in the area. So, thanks.
All right, very good. Again, staff closing comments. All right, staff waves off the opportunity. And if we could, please make any comments at the dais. Applicant rebuttal or closing comments? Very good. All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. If we could, please provide some comment, discussion, deliberation, or the chair will consider a motion.
I just like to say that I think when we see quality people that we see all the time in engineering, and we know we have good staff support, I think the community's well-served within the guidelines that they're able to. And so I'm going to recommend approval.
Okay. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Smock, a second by Mr. Turner. And Mr. Roth can't vote because he's not logged in, so if I could get some help.
I'm going to do a verbal vote.
Yeah, all right. So with that, going to call the matter of vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Chair votes aye. Motion passes five zero with, again, with Ms. Kebba and Mr. DeLezline not present.
Mr. Chair, can I t-check the mic at the podium, because it doesn't appear to be working?
Right.
I was going to instruct people how to torque into it, because it's not working.
Is this button?
Oh, that's the pack button.
There's a switch and a button. I thought I might have bumped the button.
Oh, the shutter?
Yeah, so. So can we get some assistance on the podium mic? Oh, I'm sorry. Motion passes.
That two people didn't work.
Yeah, all right. Sorry, we. Are you hearing it, Madam Clerk?
No.
No.
There's something wrong with my microphone.
All right. Thought I bumped the button here or something. Yes, I'm sorry. We're going to have a five-minute break for technical difficulties. So we're going to convene, we'll reconvene at, say, 9:25. All right. Yeah, I think we're, I think we're good to go. Waiting for a thumbs up, so. All right, we're going to go ahead and reconvene. Apparently, we've got the microphone issue resolved, and we're going to have to start all over, so, no, I'm just joking. So with that, we go to item number two, and I have a conflict of interest on that. So with that, we go to item number two, and I have a conflict of interest on that, so I'm going to have to step away from the dais and turn over the gavel and the chairmanship to Mr. Rutledge, so. Mr. Rutledge.
And, Mr. Chair, just for clarification, after we get through disclosure, ex parte communication, we need to have a full presentation. I don't know why it's upon presentation by request. The number of issues staff needs to go over, and the applicant needs to speak.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. So, first request, has anybody had ex parte communications in regards to this particular item?
No.
Sir, okay, thank you. Okay. Could you read us into the record, please?
Item number two, PDR 0564 CGR 2. Hillwood Expansion Revised General Development Plan with Reson, Victoria Ellis, George and Susan Ellis owners, Sam Branch LLC contract purchases, and is a quasi-yudicial case, and is amending and restating ordinance PDR 0564 CGR to add 19.43 acres expansion parcels, providing for the rezon of the 19.43 acres on the northeast portion of a 97.4 acre side, and 77.91 acres are already zoned PDR. The site is located on the north side of Waterline Road and approximately 2,500 feet west of the Lake Manatee Reservoir Dam Structure in Bradenton, Manatee County, from A General Agriculture to PDR Plan Development Residential Sonnet District and approved a revised general development plan for the entire site for a residential project consisting of 252 residential dwelling units, inclusive of the previously approved development of 195 residential dwelling units. And the case manager is Ms. Dorothy Rainey.
Thank you very much. And so we'd like to ask the applicant to make their presentation, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Michael Neal for the applicant, Sam Branch LLC. I'm resident of Manatee County, and I have been sworn. Thanks for the opportunity for the full presentation. We were going to suggest that ourselves. What you're seeing is an extension of our, I'll say, long-approved since 2017, Hillwood subdivision. I'm here to introduce, we have a group of professional experts here, along Richard Bedford, Vice President of Planning, Ed Vogler, Attorney, Nathan Crott, Engineer, Kara Conig, Planner, and Alec Hoffman, Biologist. We just want to point out this is an extension of a project that's been approved and under construction. We believe it's in the area that your comprehensive plan designates for growth. It's UF3, future land use, and we're seeking a rezon to PDR. We look forward to giving a full presentation, of course, addressing any concerns you have. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Mike.
Good morning, Planning Commission. Kara Conig with ZNS Engineering, Pinellas County resident, and I have been sworn. So as Michael Neal noted, this is an expansion of Hillwood, which is an existing subdivision. The request before you today is a rezon to Plan Development Residential with a general development plan amendment. To provide context of the project's location, the existing Hillwood and expansion area are located north of Waterline Road. Just east and contiguous to the Hillwood subdivision is the existing, the area of expansion, and the existing Hillwood subdivision is currently under construction. The expansion area, as mentioned, is under the future land use category of UF3, which allows for a maximum of three dwelling units per gross acre, which is consistent with the properties to the northwest and south. The existing Silwood subdivision has zoning of Plan Development Residential. It was approved in 2015 for rezoned to PDR with a general development plan, and we are requesting a rezon on this expansion area, which is 19.43 acres, to rezon to Plan Development Residential. To the west is PDR, as you can see, which is rye wilderness estates. South is agriculture, and east there is conservation and Plan Development Public Interest zoning, which is over the Manatee County-owned lands. As previously mentioned, the expansion is to the existing Hillwood Preserve. It was approved in 2015 with a rezon to PDR. The existing project area is approximately 77.9 acres. It was approved for 195 single-family detached units with a density of 2.5 dwelling units per gross acre. There are no wetlands included within the already-approved Hillwood Preserve subdivision. There was a specific requirement for 15 acres of upland preservation. With the final site plan approval of Hillwood, that upland preservation acreage was exceeded, and the current project that's approved includes 19.04 acres of upland preservation. The landscape buffers around the existing Hillwood exceed the standard buffers because there was a stipulation tied to the previous approval for upland preservation areas where they were required to be a minimum 50-foot in width. So the existing Hillwood has landscape buffers that exceed the requirement of the code. Shown here on the slide is the phasing plan tied to the final site plan that was approved last year for Hillwood, and the final plat was recently approved in April of 2023. So again, this existing area is under construction. There are no changes being made to the existing Hillwood Preserve other than an access arrow to provide access to the expansion area. So now to delve more into the general development plan amendment. Shown here is the overall general development plan. To the west is the existing Hillwood, and that eastern property where the access arrow is being shown, I don't know if there's... It's difficult to see, but the existing Hillwood provides the primary access for the expansion area. The primary access for the original Hillwood is taken off Waterline Road, which in our neighborhood ties to 172nd Street East and 7th Avenue East, and there again are no changes being made to the original Hillwood other than adding that access arrow to the east. As mentioned, the expansion area is 19.43 acres. We are requesting a rezon from A to PDR. We are proposing 57 single-family detached units on the site for a density of 2.93 dwelling units per gross acre. The overall Hillwood subdivision, if approved, will be a density of 2.6 dwelling units per gross acre, which is less than the maximum three dwelling units per gross acre. The expansion area is exceeding the required 25% open space by providing 40%. We're meeting the standard requirements of the code for green belt buffers, providing 15 feet where required. There are 15... Sorry, there are .0... .81 acres of wetlands included within the expansion area, which is comprised of Sam Branch Creek, and that is not proposed for impact. The 30-foot wetland buffers are being provided. There is .69 acres of upland preservation proposed within the expansion area. However, the overall Hillwood already provides more than the requirement for upland preservation, and we'll delve more into this with our specific approval request. There is one specific approval request tied to this application, which is LDC Section The request is to provide access by easement to this area through an existing recorded 25-foot ingress egress easement to allow access by easement for a maximum of one lot. So the arrow that is behind the specific approval request is in the southeast corner of the expansion property, and there's an existing recorded ingress egress easement there. The primary access through the expansion will still go through the existing Hillwood Preserve, but we are requesting this access here as well, and Ed Vogler will speak more on this request.
Thank you, Kara. Good morning, members of the commission. Ed Vogler, Manatee County, I have been sworn.
Good morning.
Pleasure to be here this morning. In response to a couple of points in the staff report and public comment and anticipated public comment, I want to make a few summary points without extensive elaboration, but absolutely prepared to answer any questions that you might have. One of the comments that was made was about access to rye wilderness estates through the existing Hillwood subdivision, and the public comment that was sent to you requested that you not allow that access. And what I wanted to say, both to you and for the record, is those roads in existing Hillwood subdivision are already platted and dedicated to the county and accepted by the county. So those are already public roads, and so that comment is, I think, unaware of that current condition. The upland preservation questions were mentioned, and the existing project provides four-plus acres excess upland preservation, and we intend to deal with that on the final site plan and make sure that the upland preservation areas are respected but located in an area that's convenient for development and use. In the staff report, there was a notice of an agricultural clearing that occurred on the site some years ago, and I... We have our expert here, Alec Hoffman, that can speak to that as well, but I just wanted to point out in the summary fashion that that was prior to this GDP application. It was authorized by the current landowner and was a permissible activity. But in any event, whether you clear land properly or improperly, it's a final site plan question, as noted in your staff report, and so if people comment upon it, that will be dealt with at FSP. But the most important point deals with this access point. This is the southeast corner of the site, and you can see there's a .69-acre upland parcel. By the way, the average elevation of that piece is about 35 feet above sea level, which is interesting, I think, in some respects, but you can see the environmentally sensitive areas adjacent to it. However, our plan would be to authorize that for one lot, for one building lot. .69 acres, we think it would be very attractive to someone. And so the specific approval request is sort of a belts and suspenders. I suspect that we were asked to do that early in the process by the staff for specific approval. However, the way I read the code, Section 1,001B3B specifically allows access by easement for one lot, and the width of the easement under that code section is 20 feet minimum required. In this case, we have 25-foot easement. Access to one lot should not require a specific approval. I think the reason it's being requested is because we haven't yet said specifically on our drawing that we would limit that parcel to one lot, but we will. And so therefore, I think, specific approval can be certainly granted in the context that it's presented, and if we designate that as one lot, I suggest that specific approval is not required. So in either event, it's probably not a particularly important matter. But I did notice in the staff report, and this would be somewhat alarming to me if I read it, and it says, well, some of the county staff is against this because of the adjacent water plant and the fact that, you know, additional persons accessing one lot would have access to the road, and they make these comments and say we don't support the specific approval. What I find incredibly ironic about that is the easement that we've been talking about, the 25-foot granted easement that provides the access, was granted by Manatee County. The county granted the easement in 1989, and I think it's somewhat incredulous to say that we will grant you this easement for access to this parcel, but you can't use it when you come in for zoning, and that seems wrong to me. But nevertheless, I wanted the record to cover those points. Happy to answer any additional questions. It was on presentations by request because fundamentally, there's... The application is consistent with everything, expansion of an existing project. There's a couple of these little tweaks that are mentioned, and we've dealt with them now on the record, and you may hear some public comment, and again, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions of the applicant? Anybody in the board that has questions in regards to this? I have a couple. So explain to me, if you would, Mr. Vogler. Thanks. This .69 acres, it is the implication, at least, that there is going to be a singular home there. Is that correct?
It is, Mr. Rutledge, but we haven't really said that in the application, and I think that that's probably something we should do. So when I get involved and look at this sort of at the end, like public hearing time, I say, well, you know, maybe we should do that, and so we will.
Okay, so that... But that's a bit of a, yeah, I'm gonna, kind of, as opposed to saying I'm doing it. So it makes it a little more difficult, because I agree with you that most of the things seem like they follow the rights that you have. You're under the three. You have more green space. You've done everything else right, and this seems a bit odd to me, and seems... I have a difficult time going against staff when they say they don't like that. Now, if you made the reference that you have a singular home, and that says certain things about traffic and so forth, .69 acres on average would give you two or three units there, maybe, right? So I find that... I appreciate that I trust you implicitly, as I do the Neal family. However, you didn't say that. You said...
No, I think it's a glitch in our... I think I have said it. It's a glitch in our application, and we will limit that to one lot. And what I've suggested... So, okay, when we review this, one of the things we can do is amend our general development plan and submit it to the staff, but then what happens is you get bumped from your public hearing schedule. So we don't want to do that. So we come here, we disclose it to you, we accept a stipulation if you impose it at the planning commission level, and I'm also telling you that between... Immediately following this meeting, we're going to present a new plan that shows one lot limitation there.
Okay. I think that helps.
That's what we're going to do.
Yes, sir. Mr. Roth?
So you said the easement was approved, this location, in 19 what?
Eighty-nine.
And was the plant next door in existence, or did that come later?
No, that was... It was in existence.
Mr. Turner, any questions from the applicant?
No. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I'd like to invite staff up and make your comments, please.
Dorothy Rainey for staff, and I have been sworn.
Good morning.
Good morning. I don't know if you want me to just do a very quick run-through of the items that were not covered by the applicant on my presentation?
I think as you see best.
Okay. Yeah, just some of the highlights that, again, that they may not have covered in their presentation. So the requests, I won't go over. They've done that in detail. The specific approval, I will talk a little bit about that eventually here. You know what, the zoning, the location, surrounding uses, we've gone through. Basically, the positive aspects are what they don't summarize for you. That's staff that does that. So the request is to add the 19.43 acre of existing... To the existing project, already-approved development, so the infrastructure and other amenities will be available to serve the expansion of the project. Also, the expansion parcels do not abut any existing residential properties or residential uses, so there will be no potential for compatibility issues with large lots and a lower-density surrounding use of the surrounding uses. The negative is the expansion parcels were partially cleared with some tree removal prior to obtaining approval of the project, which also impacted potential gopher tortoise habitat to serve the tortoises on site. Mitigating factors are that we've provided a stipulation to require that the applicant address the tree replacement prior to approval of the first final site plan, and the conclusion, of course, is that it's the opinion of staff that the request for the rezon of the 19.43 acres and proposed revision to the general development plan for a total 97.43-acre project excluding the specific approval request for the access easement usage, along with the recommended stipulations, can be found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and in compliance with applicable provisions of the Land Development Code. I want to now speak to the stipulations that were added and shown on the update memo. Unfortunately, it was like late in the process here. We... We acknowledged and made a decision that these stipulations need to be carried forward from the original approval because they're interrelated. For one, there's a management plan that was required and provided for the original project area regarding habitat and how it relates to gopher tortoise habitat. With the new expansion, it is adjacent to Rye Preserve and, you know, preserved conservation lands that are likely going to be a place where the gopher tortoises can go. So if there are few inhabiting the expansion parcel area but, you know, need to move on to a safer, you know, preserved area, we want to make sure they provide the -- or leave the upland preservation areas intact that are abutting that property. So we do need time to go through and figure out what exactly we need to carry forward and how the stipulations need to be worded to address the expansion parcel coming on board with the original project area that's already got approvals based on management plans and fish and wildlife permits for the gopher tortoises and all that. So those stipulations, unfortunately, they're not in their final version. They need to be tweaked and adjusted, again, to make sense and to take into account the -- what was already in place with the original project area. So that's really all I have. If you have any questions about all that, I will try to answer them.
Eric, is this someone? Can't tell. So--
That's him.
Okay, sorry. Thank you. So for the record, several of the stipulations under the environmental section will be updated by Dorothy and the applicant. They will hand out the update memo, but that'd be updated because this is a current case law.
Okay. So we can encapsulate them?
I'll put that in the motion.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all -- I feel they're all necessary. They just are not in their final form to make sense and to take, like I said, into account what was approved and addressed with the original project. Now with this coming on board, there's still gopher tortoises on the expansion area. There's still preservation necessary of habitat that will help, you know, provide a connection.
So the negative aspects to the habitat were not created by the applicant, and they're going to be required to remedy it, correct?
Yeah, there was, as the attorney, Mr. Vogler, mentioned, there was some clearing.
Prior to, though?
Pardon?
Prior to.
Yeah, well, yeah. It was -- apparently, there was a free-for-all for clearing after Ian came through. There's other projects that did the same thing. However, our stance is, you know, we're the jurisdiction that's going to approve or deny your project, and we have rules about clearing in anticipation of development, and it's very obvious they were anticipating development. So we feel that, you know, that SWIFT MUD's permission does not override, you know, our requirements and our permission, so we'll work that out, and some of the stipulations do address, you know, the tree removal that will be addressed prior to final site plan of approval of the expansion.
So the .69 acres in question, can we vote on that today?
The .69 -- oh, you're talking about the--
The single resident.
Portion to have access by the easement.
Is that part of the ordinance today?
That is the specific approval to allow the access to that .69 acres by the easement that the county granted. Where staff did not -- the findings did not support approval of that. That's what--
That's why the exception.
Yeah, that's why we have an alternate motion. And of course, the reason mostly is the security of the water treatment plant next door and having access to it. And actually, I had a question for the applicant. The easement, I believe, only goes to the south edge of the county-owned property. How do they go and continue down to Waterline Road to get public, you know, access to a public road for that single-family home if they build one there? I don't see how they're going to achieve that. They have to get an easement over several private property owners' property, from what I can tell, but maybe they can answer that on their rebuttal.
It looks like he's ready.
Ms. Rainey, before you leave, Ms. Rainey, before you leave, can I ask you a couple other things, please? So first of all, I have such confidence in the staff, and when you tell me that they might have had something happen there that wasn't consistent with our codes, and you'll make sure they will, I am so certain of that. Thank you.
Well, I can give even more confidence, because in 2006, I was an environmental planner, and I reviewed this. I produced the stipulations for this, and, well, with Joel Christian's finalization of it, because it was, I guess, a bit of a touchy situation. I remember going out there with Bill Boars, our urban forester, and seeing the decimation of all the trees on the site, the original site, and we had to, like I said, put together something to require that they do replacement somehow, so. And some of it was the preservation, as they mentioned, the 50-foot wide buffers around the perimeter is part of that restitution, if you will.
Right.
Yeah, so. But yeah, I had to put on my environmental planner cap and go back in history, and I found my old comments. I was like, "Oh, yeah, I remember that." So I will have all that advantage in working with our current environmental reviewer to massage these stipulations and make them work properly to--
And are you comfortable with the representation that's been made, that this easement is a right that they have, and that in using the easement, they have all the things they need to use it, and that it is by code, not by risk of the water plant? In other words, I think those are two separate questions in my mind, but by code, they have the prerogative to do what they've described? And without them saying they're going to do it, other than saying they're going to do it, are you okay with that?
Well, that's kind of, I think, more of a legal question that I might defer to our attorney.
I think that's good. Okay, that's great.
I don't think I'm qualified to make a final ruling about something like that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Rutledge, may I make a comment, please?
Yes, ma'am, please.
We did try to read the easement, and it was a little unclear with public work staff, and I'm not an attorney, and they're not an attorney, but I think they did have some questions regarding that easement, so I think that's another reason, and we also did not know that they were proposing only one lot. Now, we do have a section in our public work standards that does not allow access by easements in the creation of a new subdivision, but it's not a new easement. So again, there's some legal issues here that I think someone other than staff needs to review and come to some understanding on.
Okay. Any other questions from the board on this or the submission at this point?
I think I'd like to hear from them. I think they've answered this under the access.
I think at this point we'd--
In response to that question, could I answer the access question?
A little bit out of sequence, but I think it's appropriate.
Well, in response to his question, but thank you, too. Could this overhead go on, please? Okay, so here is the first page of the recorded easement, 1989, O.R. book and page. You see, recorded public records. Grantor of that easement, you can see, is County of Manatee. County of Manatee. And so then, there's a legal description there in the center of the document, but there's also a sketch attached.
I was just going to say, my--
Well, no, we couldn't read, you know, the legal description per se, but the sketch is drawn by Leo Mills, and you can see, I've put it in yellow, if you can see it. The legal description extends from Waterline Road, which is a collector road 84 feet wide, and extends 25 feet in width all the way up and past the subject property, but you can see the .69 acre parcel right there on the corner benefited by that easement. And so I just think there's no doubt about it. We're not creating an easement to support a subdivision. It's an existing easement granted by Manatee County, and, I mean, I don't know that you can come back, how many years later is this, 33, and say, "My goodness, we don't want you to use that easement."
Oh, I think we do it all the time.
Well, that would be interesting to me, but--
Okay. No, thank you for that clarity.
For staff, does it make it more comfortable that it's one lot versus the subdivision?
For public works and the utilities department, I think, yes, one lot would be helpful, because I think that was the original intent of the easement. It was for a large agricultural--
Comp -- comp.
Parcel.
Yeah.
But I don't want to speak for them. They are the ones who developed the response to the specific approval, so we'll have to get with them.
Counselor? I might--
Just this is the first I've seen the Manatee County easement. I mean, nothing was submitted with the quest for legal services, no deeds were sent up to our office, so we only pulled the deed so we could find the records, and we didn't have the county easement thing, so I have no pain on this. I mean, it's the applicant's ballgame on here.
My--
Why though it has -- it can't be used for a public road, because there's a reverter clause in it, and I thought it was used for a public road. I mean, there's nothing that--
There's no concern.
They have to amend the application to straighten this out. It's been a mass confusion.
Okay, may I ask--
It saved me a lot of time, but was clear earlier on.
May I ask this question? Would you think it, out of the legal bounds of approving this, with the assumption that they are going to, in fact, one, make it a singular lot, and, two, that the easement will stand? Because those are the two uncertainties in my mind.
Well, per the planning commission, I was just going to amend the motion to make that clear.
Okay.
The applicant's, you know, subject to the application being amended by the applicant for the one lot, and then I was going to have the stipulation by environmental being fine-tuned by staff as well.
Okay.
I was going to incorporate in your motion. I can't resolve it today.
No, no, that's--
And the county attorney's office, that's new meetings and bounds sketches. I mean, we don't do that. You know, it's up to the applicant to submit these sketches.
I understand.
The special approval letter from last April has no attachments to it. So in defense of staff, you know, they did their best on this.
Okay, that's great. I think that's helpful. At this point, I'd like to open it up for public comment, and so anybody that would like to speak in regards to this particularly, would you please step forward? Name and your residency, and I understand you've been sworn.
Yes, my name is Mark Van Der Ee, representing Waterline Road Preservation Group. I reside in Manatee County. I have been sworn. I would like to request maybe a couple extra minutes. I did have authorization from neighborhoods of more than five signatures, but our power out there has been off at night for the last three days. I didn't have a chance to get my generator cooking, so I couldn't print out that authorization.
That's all right.
But there's a lot of things I'd like to cover.
Go ahead, you have the time.
I'll make it as quick as possible.
Yes, sir.
We are opposed. Yes?
How much time do you think you need, sir?
Give me five minutes.
I think that's reasonable. Yes, sir, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, yeah, the Waterline Road Preservation Group opposes this rezone, and we are specifically opposed to the specific approval request for this, using this easement. We aren't even sure this easement exists. Apparently, it does from way back in 89. A lot of things have changed around that water plant since then. A lot has changed on Waterline Road, okay? The security around that plant has been hardened, obviously, since 9/11 and more recently because of the risk to access to the reservoir and the water treatment for the entire county, okay? Now, along this easement area, I believe, is also major transmission, water transmission lines that feeds water up to Parish, and I can see the water plant people being very concerned about having general access to that area. That's a very risky thing to do, okay? In addition, this area for specific approval is right now conservation land. It's designated conservation. Why would you allow somebody to put a road on conservation property? That's going backwards. That's not the right use for this. Also, to access a lot, which is not in their application, I think they need to stop and redo their whole application, because it is riddled with errors and omissions. Staff did a great job on picking these things up, but it needs to be kicked back and revised and resubmitted. The timing is not right for this. I tell you, it's not right, because there are so many questions and errors and omissions in the application, all right? To get to this property on the southeast corner, they're going to have to cross Sand Branch. What are they going to do? Build a bridge over there? How would they do that? The county has abandoned ideas of crossing Sand Branch. It's a very deep ravine there. Now, in addition, that section of this property that's up for rezone floods. Look at the FEMA maps. It floods a lot. In the last 20 years, the county had to open the dam gates and flood downstream, had some evacuations down there. This particular property on that northeast corner was underwater, and it's underwater a lot. I know that, because my property backs up to this general area. It's separated by 20 acres of county property, okay? But I know what happens out there. I've seen it. In the last 20 years, I've seen it firsthand. Now, the timing is not right. You've got 57 more houses going out there. The people in Rye Wilderness Subdivision, they're complaining, because, yeah, the roads are through on the existing Hillwood subdivision, but now they're going to have more traffic through their neighborhood. They don't want more traffic. Nobody wants more traffic, especially since it was kind of snuck in back in 2015, 2017 in the first place, this access, through access to Rye Wilderness Subdivision. The stipulation for the original development was not completely defined in the application or even in the staff report. There is a 150-foot buffer required along the front of Waterline Road, and we're hoping that that remains, that that's not changed, okay? This particular developer and contractor has done some sneaky stuff out there. They said on this property where they want to have rezoned, this 19 acres, that the clearcutting for agricultural purposes was done years ago. It wasn't. It was done nine, 10 months ago. It was before Hurricane Ian came through. I know, because I saw the bulldozers going in there ripping out the trees. It was done illegally. I don't care what SWIFT MUD said. It was done illegally. It was not done for agricultural purposes. It was a sneaky way to get in there and rip these trees out, because they were harvesting the rest of the 77 acres, and they figured, "Let's do this all at the same time." Now, in the process of doing that illegal clearcutting, they trampled on the tortoises. The environmental study that they present was done in November after the clearcutting. Well, yeah, there's nothing alive. It was done after the clearcutting. That's not what we want to see in our neighborhood, okay? So please reject this rezone at this time. Kick it back. Have staff go back over it. Have legal take another look at it. Talk to the water plant people. I think if there is an easement, it needs to be modified or severely, maybe vacated altogether, because things have changed. Security issues have changed. It's not the same world as it was in 1989. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time. Thanks for the thoughtful approach, too. We appreciate that. Okay, is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak, please? Forgive me.
Hi, Carol Phelps, Maakka City. And, well, you always know why we come down here and what we have to say. We've known that since a few years ago when we-- Yes, sir.
Have you been sworn?
I don't believe so. Would you like to do that?
That would be the start. Let's start there.
Certainly. I got here a little late because of the traffic.
That's all right. You didn't go unnoticed.
Okay, so Carol Phelps, Maakka City, you know why we come down here. One of the things that I appreciate is that we have had people that have been submitting public comment, and I very much appreciate that apparently somebody is reading them and responding to them, and that's a good thing, because we need productive dialogue on this. We have to face this one fact, that we have been dealing with a tremendous issue in addressing the move of our F-DAP, and every time we have dealt with something, it never stops. It comes back. It's what we say about if you let the camel's nose into the tent. And whatever, every time something happens, what do we all end up back here with? Asking for more. And at this time, we're looking at more when there are so many more things in this county that should give some pause to what we're considering doing. Right now, what is the condition-- condition of our county water? How many boil water notices do we have? How many sewer pipes have we had leakage of? Gas leaks? We have a tremendous amount of problems that we should be addressing as the public, as our elected officials, and as our planning commission. And when we come up with a situation like this, one of the things you have to realize is that we do live out there, and what we're saying about things like clearcutting, bringing in filter, we know how it works. Right now, we're looking at things that are, we're getting public hearing notices about now. It's on the agendas for the B O C C or the public, the planning commission, but we've been watching the clearcutting going on. We have pictures of an entire Woodstork colony that went up in smoke and flames. We have pictures of our county fire departments coming out there and manning uncontrolled burns that went on at this place. But we're not scientists. We're not lawyers. We're not land planners. All we have is our own eyes and ears, and the eyes and the ears of the public are on this, and we could tell you what we see out there. The dirt gets moved way before, and we're very much into our land rights. If I wanted to, I could bring in 10,000 tons of dirt and fill in my lake, and that's nobody's business but my own until, perhaps, because that lake was made to retain water and it floods my neighbors, which is exactly what's happened out there. So, all we ask for is that you've heard some very good arguments from staff. No, the gopher tortoises, which are there right now, today, are not going to just pick up and, well, we're going to move. That's not the way it really works. They may migrate. Some may survive, but as you know, or you should know, tortoise colonies don't do that. They die of a virus when they're interacting with the other ones. But we still appreciate you. We still appreciate the applicant being so kind as to review our public comments, and we'd like for you to reconsider not approving this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this issue, please? We welcome you, and we appreciate your insight, so please feel free to come forward. If not, then we're going to close public hearing. So unless I hear anything further, we'll close public hearing. Sorry?
I have a few comments.
Okay.
The 25-foot easement to this single lot, you know, I'd understand the concern more if it was to the entire subdivision, but if this request was coming from an individual to have access to that lot, I don't think we'd have the problem, and the easement is in place already. I don't consider that a big security risk for one resident. Secondly, if we're requiring the developer to mitigate the habitat challenges that we have, then how else do we fix this? Right? So, if we're worried about the habitat, we're requiring them to fix it. How else do we fix it? And the flooding, a developer can't be responsible for flood, the flood zones and things. So, those are my comments.
I concur with Ray and his points. You know, that easement being there with just one home being on that property, I don't really see that as a security issue. More than likely, I mean, you have no idea what that one individual lot was going to do, but I mean, if I had it, I think I'd have a gate at the end of the road for myself, preventing anybody from prying eyes, watering up on my own.
Individual, I don't think we'd have to.
Yeah. I don't think that's- Absolutely.
Mr. Roth, do you have thoughts?
I have.
Okay. I have a couple other questions, if you don't mind me being a little neurotic about this, but I do think that the presentation, Mark, that you made is helpful for me. So, I have a couple of things. I'm just going to list them, and then I'm going to ask the applicant to comment, and then staff as best they can, understanding what we have gotten advice from counsel. Mr. Rainey, I'm so happy that this is your project. I don't know if you are, but I am. So, there are a couple of things that came up that are curious to me. So, my question, and I'm just going to put them out there, is that I would like to know who's in charge of security for the water plant? Who is authorized and responsible for saying the water lines, the access, all those things are secure enough to meet the current standards? Because I do think the, in 1989, it's not the same after 9/11. It's just not, and I think that's a concern. I also think the easement issue has to be sorted out because if there's something that's been granted, it's not that they haven't gone back, but I think you have to respond to that as a question. The flooding, I feel like we have a great staff that monitors that, and they know the standard, which is you can do no harm. You can't cause more flooding, and you can't stop them from having water. The buffer, I think, is really kind of a question of what's the standard. Whatever the code is, the code is. We don't have flexibility on that. The clearcutting thing really kind of bothers me. I have to tell you, one of the things I, the premise I use when we look at approvals is that we're dealing with professionals, people who live in the community and care about doing the right thing, and this clearcutting in advance or under the premise of other things. I've had people cutting mangroves down, saying that they had a permit, and they bear in the shores and stuff, so I'm a little sensitive to that, and I think that we need some thoughts on that. So, I would invite the applicant to make a first comment on those, if you would, and then have staff kind of give us their insight. So, Mr. Vogler or Mr. Neal, either one?
Happy to make direct responses to those comments. The security for the water plant is Manatee County responsibility, of course. I would point out that there are existing residences in the area that take access off this roadway, easement roadway, and Waterline Road. The buffer, the comment was very odd to me because, as our planner showed you, there's an existing project approved, and then there's an expansion project. So, the existing project had 150-foot buffer requirement on Waterline Road that resulted from that original 2015 public comment and response to the board, and that's been preserved. It's platted. It's as built right now, 150-foot buffer in place. I'm going to defer for one second on the clearcutting question and bring up Alec Hoffner. There's a couple of other points that I would like to make, and I appreciate the commissioner's comment. This is one very valuable lot, and it does not create a security risk. It just doesn't of the magnitude that would justify the taking of a valuable property right? I mean, I guess you'll make that judgment in a zoning context. I don't think so, but, you know, that's the point, right? And I would say also, if it's limited to one lot, as I've said, my opinion is specific approval is not required. So, actually, however you deal with that, doesn't concern me today. And, you know, the gentleman speaks ominously, but there's not going to be any crossing of Sand Branch Creek. I mean, there's not going to be a bridge. There's not going to be a crossing of the creek. What is it about this plan that suggests that might happen? Nothing.
Okay.
Okay? I mean, you can't simply say those things and create angst in people. The easement that was granted, I showed you, county easement, 1989, we can talk about the date and time and the implications of that, but that was granted, and that county property directly south of this subject site is owned by the county, right? Do you know what the land use designation is of that property? UF3, exactly like this. It's not conservation lands. I mean, these are statements that are made that are not right, and you have to listen to them, but if they move you to a decision, it shouldn't be based upon facts that are not right. And when the developer stands here and talks to you, the applicant, you could say, well, they either have integrity or they don't have integrity, but the most important point is this. If we tell you something in a public hearing, and you grant an approval on that, that approval is based on that wrong fact, we are at risk, and that's just true. So, the applicant has to be accurate, scrupulously accurate. Others don't. Okay, flooding, look, I said this in the comments, 35-foot elevation, okay? This is Florida. That's a mountain, right? So, yeah, everything flash floods. You know, we design our systems to the 25- and 50-year storm events. When you have a 100-year storm event-
It's good background.
I like to get accompanied by a little music. It's fine. But when you have a 100-year storm event, there's going to be episodic flooding. The standard is whether it clears in 24 hours, even 48 hours. We had a 500-year storm with Ian. So, you know, yeah, there's little flooding at periodic times. After you build this project, it won't flood, right, Nathan, our engineer? Okay. All right. Here's another thing I just want to comment on.
Excuse me, Mr.-
Yes?
I think you're entitled to have this noise. Can we turn this phone off, please? Or have the vendor?
It's an alarm setting.
Is it a good one? That's good. Thank you very much.
Somebody's going to be looking for something.
We want to give you full opportunity to respond to this in a way that we can not be distracted.
Hoping that you heard everything that I said.
Yes, sir.
So, yes, it is the applicant's responsibility to describe the status of the easements and to make the record clear. That is true, and what I've heard today is someone say that that wasn't done properly, and I just want to cover something with you on that. I, the county presented in their response questions, DRC questions, county staff writes questions to us. Sometimes the county attorney's office helps them form the questions. There are questions presented to us, and these are the answers that I wrote. They were then taken onto the ZNS stationery and returned as a response to those questions. This one, the property is served by one easement that extends from the property boundary south to Waterline Road, as recorded in O R book 1187, page 3258, the very one that we put into the record today, the hard copy of it. I mean, it's readily known what easement it is. It's got a sketch attached to it. So, anyway, I won't bore you with the total responses, but there was a full and complete response to these questions, to the applicability of 1,001.1B3, the use of the easement for servicing this property, and so, I mean, if someone were to say that we didn't provide that information, that would not be right. And finally, I'd like to ask Alec Hoffner to join me, please, and introduce yourself and tell them whether you've been sworn.
Good morning. I'm Alec Hoffner. I'm an environmental consultant. I work for Kimley Horn, and I have been sworn.
Now, I don't want to, Alec is a common presenter here, and he's very skilled, and he knows Manatee County, but I want to ask him two questions to answer, and you can add anything else you want.
Okay.
Are you familiar with the agricultural permitting that occurred, and was it permissible?
Yes, I am familiar with it, and it is permissible.
And why?
Well, I just kind of want to give a little context or detail as to the process that was gone through.
Yes, please.
So, the applicant came to me and asked me, you know, can we do this? And the agricultural clearing on the property. And I said, I think so, but let me find out and make sure. And so, as Manatee County doesn't regulate agricultural activities, I then deferred to the Water Management District. And so, I made a specific call to the Water Management District and talked with the manager there, the environmental manager, and asked the very specific question and gave all of the details about what we'd be doing, and I asked for his advice. And he clearly explained to me that it was an agricultural use and that it was exempt from any sort of permitting. And so, I then relayed that advice to the applicant, my client, and they proceeded with the work. So, I just want everybody to understand that. It wasn't like we just went into it without any knowledge. We did do our due diligence.
This wasn't done in the middle of the night?
No, sir, not at all.
There was nothing sneaky or illegal done?
No, sir.
Okay.
Sneaky is a word that I resisted commenting on, but I do have one other question, though, and it's important. Are you familiar enough with the current status of the property and the work that was done to have an opinion as to whether or not fill material was added or dirt moved on the site?
I have not observed any material removed or added to the site fill material. It was strictly a clearing type exercise.
All right. Can I ask you a question? Would you mind, Mr. Vogler? And so, are you pretty knowledgeable about soils?
Absolutely. I'm a soil scientist.
That's helpful. And so, is there, on this new expansion or modified property portion, any significant muck holes or muck spots that would require fill, topping, anything like that that you know?
So, we have, muck is usually associated with a wetland. I think everybody can agree upon that. We have done a wetland delineation on the project, and the wetland is limited to the creek system. We're not aware of any other wetlands.
So, there's no bogs there or something that they might have covered up when they did the clearing or any of that stuff?
No, sir.
Because you and I weren't there, were we? I mean, I wasn't.
Well, I've been on the property. I was there before this activity occurred, so I did not observe anything like that.
Okay, that's helpful.
That was definitely not the intent of this exercise.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
I would just make a final comment. We don't roll in a sneaky way. We don't do things that violate the code. We read the code. We do read the public comments. We try to make a full presentation. We understand it's our burden, and we believe that this is a prima facie case for approval. We actually think it's an easy approval, and the question of specific approval, don't debate it a lot. If you vote against it, it's fine. If you vote for it, it's fine, too. We're going to make that commitment, perform that commitment. That's going to be one lot. It's not going to endanger anybody, and I just think this is not a difficult decision under these circumstances, but we'd be grateful for your consideration.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Thanks. At this point, I'd like to ask if staff has any rebuttal or comments. Mr. Rainey, I'd appreciate if you had any thoughts on this.
If I may, I know this mic's working. I have a question for Nise Greer on the specific approval issue.
Yes, ma'am.
She's the one applies the testimony. So, given the testimony heard today, Ms. Greer, is it your professional opinion that specific approval is not required under Section 1,001.1B3ODC to allow access by easement to one lot?
I do not because it's actually in the Public Works standard, and we can do a design exception to that standard to allow that. And in full disclosure, that section of the standard is getting ready to change that will allow one lot to take easement in a platted subdivision. So, I really don't think that it's required.
Okay, so when we do the motion, I'll just take out that specific approval thing.
Okay.
I just referred to updating the environmental stipulations.
Thanks for that.
I just want to state that in the record.
Yeah, thanks. Very, very helpful. It's helpful. Makes me smarter.
Dorothy Rainey again for staff, and I have been sworn. Back to the easement Mr. Vogler was talking about just now. The easement, I thought it goes straight through that property to the south, but in fact, it does not. It comes off the southeast portion, the east property line of the expansion parcel, and then traverses conservation, future land use category property, as well as PSP1 or public semi-public 1 property to get down to Waterline Road. And the same with the zoning. It goes through conservation zone property, and then the rest of the way, it's the PDPI. I can put this on the document camera if you'd like to. So, yeah, there's the future land use categories. That's UF3. It's not, in fact, over UF3. It's over conservation, future land use, and PSP1, future land use, to get down to Waterline Road. And then the same with the zoning. The zoning is conservation and then PDPI for the water plant. So, I just want to make that clarification.
Thank you.
And then also regarding the clearing of the land, I did not specifically do this, but if need be, we can go back and see who owned the properties between April and September of 2022, which is when the clearing occurred. Jason Wagman was our environmental reviewer, and I'm assuming he checked back at what the most recent layer prior to what Ian photography was provided to us probably showed it still, the tree's still there. So, it's- So, it's in anticipation of development, obviously, and we've made that case before on other projects. As a matter of fact, we made it on the existing project when they clear cut that as well without permission. So, that's just something I wanted to clarify. And as I mentioned to the applicant at the time we discussed this clearing, and it's in the staff report, the post-Ian aerial shot is in the staff report on page 10. Well, 10 of 28. I don't know what it is on your agenda packet, but it shows the clearing that occurred. And of course, as I said, it was just in the development area. They didn't touch anything else. So, you know, why? That's kind of a coincidence? I don't think so. Anyway, so, you know, we're, again, we're gonna revise the stipulations to address everything. And, you know, again, it's our jurisdiction to approve or deny the project, and it's supposed to follow our code requirements, which does have, you know, a requirement that they not clear cut or remove vegetation in anticipation of development. And I think we can clearly prove that it is in anticipation. Again, I didn't go back and look at the ownership, but I can almost bet that, you know, they owned it back in April of 2022. So, anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Ms. Rainey. Mr. Vogler, would you like to speak?
Yes. I think I want to rebut the rebut. So, first of all, the real property land ownership is vested in the Ellis family, and it has been since about 1989. And the potential developer of this property does not own it today. So, that's a fact. And when my friend Dorothy says "they cleared it prior to the development of the original hillwood," I want you to understand that that "they" was not us. Somebody owned that property at that time, did whatever they did on that property at that time, right or wrong. It ultimately got sold to us a couple of years ago. After the zoning was approved in 2015. So, the "they" is not us. And that's really important. And so, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Neal.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Ed's always extremely accurate. The Ellis family's actually owned this since 1925, approximately.
Yes, sir.
Victoria Ellis is, I believe, in her 80s, and I think it was either her parents' or grandparents' property. I just have to respectfully disagree with Mrs. Rainey. You look at historical aerials from the 60s, 70s, this is a longleaf pine farm. It's silver culture. If you've ever been to North Florida on US 19, there's hundreds of thousands of acres of longleaf pine. So, the Ellis family has clear cut this property at least three times in the last 100 years.
Yeah.
And just so, for the record, we purchased the property in 2021. So, thank you.
Can I ask you just one question? The clearing of land under the agricultural banner is pretty common. And it happens a lot because there's not a lot of controls that the agricultural community has via zoning. So, you're well aware of that, right?
Yes, sir. And by the way, going back to your previous comment, I completely understand and respect the questions that you're asking, Mr. Hoffner.
Yes, sir.
I give you my word, there was absolutely no unauthorized clearing of wetlands. And as he pointed out, I called him before we did the limited clearing to make sure it was okay. So, you can get, you know, God is my witness, there was no clearing of wetlands.
Okay. Yes, I take your word. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments from staff? Ms. Rainey, have any other thoughts or comments? Ms. Jack, do you have any comments additions? Okay. Last comments from the board. Mr. Turner, thoughts? Mr. Roth?
No, I agree. As much questions as was called to the county staff, that they didn't have time to prepare and/or that the developer didn't have time to deliver quality information. I just, I'm very happy with the presentation. I think everything was set forth very clearly and painted a very clear picture of what's gonna happen. So, I'm satisfied.
I would just comment that I appreciate taking the time to go through this. I also see that there are often times when we have some disagreements. I would always expect that the developers in our community work with the staff to make sure that there's no incongruencies or inaccuracies, because I think that's sometimes where this falls. And I find no fault about what was delivered or any of that. That's just not my specialty. I don't see any particular reason where we can, by our charter or our code or our obligation, not accept this. So, I'm gonna ask for if there's any motion from the board.
So, Mr. Chair, the motion for approval would be modified in two respects. Won't be to delete the findings for a specific approval, since that request is deleted, subject to the applicant putting in the writing, the one access to one lot by easement. And the only other modification would be subject to modification of some of the environmental stipulations, as stated by staff in the applicant in the record.
Who's gonna make that motion?
Already done.
Okay. Is the motion as represented on the screen what you're proposing, counselor?
Mine doesn't work, so I have to look.
Oh, well. Hey, Ray, share your screen, man.
Well, the actual motion isn't there. It's just the.
All right. Well, then, the motion.
For approval, and I do have the two changes in the record.
Okay. So, the motion as on your screen with the modifications, as counsel has recommended, is what we're proposing? Okay. Okay. Mr. Turner has moved. Mr. Smoke has seconded. So, would you please vote? And it passes 4-0 with the chairman absent. Passes.
All right.
Keep your gavel there.
Thank you. All right. I'll resume the chairmanship of the hearing here. All right. On to item number three, which is presentations scheduled. So, Ms. Leidar, can you please read item number three into the record, please?
Item number three, PDR 2205 CP Linger Lodge Road, rezonant preliminary site plan. White Oak Development, LTD owner, D.R. Horton, INC. contract purchase. And it's a quasi-yudist case, and it's an ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, regarding land development amended the zoning, the official zoning atlas. Ordinance 1517 as amended, the Manatee County Land Development Code related to zoning within the incorporated area, provided for the rezon of more or less 17.8 acres. Seven acres are already rezoned, PDMU, and 10.8 acres are zoned A1, of the total of 70.5 acre project site. The site is generally located in the southeast corner of I-75 and Linger Lodge Road, and commonly known as 8240 Linger Lodge Road, from PDMU STWPE, Plan Development Mixed Use Special Treatment Watershed Protection Evers, and A1 STWPE Agriculture Suburban Special Treatment Watershed Protection Evers to PDR retaining the watershed protection evers and the special treatment overlays, and approving a preliminary site plan for a 99 single-family attached residential unit development.
Thank you. And for the commissioners, have there been any ex parte communications regarding this application?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah? What is that you would disclose?
So, while riding in my neighborhood, which is just not far, my wife read to me the article that was in one of the online services, and she and I were talking about Linger Lodge's history and so forth. I don't know that it excludes me, but full disclosure.
Ms. Schenck, is that rise to a conflict?
No, that's not even an ex parte communication.
Okay.
I'll tell my wife. I don't use that often, I think.
All right. All right. Very, very good. If we could, could you please go ahead and make your presentation, state your name, and that you've been sworn?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners Kyle Grimes. I'm attorney with the law firm of Grimes Galvano, and I have been sworn. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, D.R. Horton. With me today, representing D.R. Horton, I have Mr. Nick Apparicio, VP of Land, Cam Miller, Manager, as well as our professional consultant team, Dan Bond with our engineering, Michael Yates with Palm Traffic, and Kerry Kelly, our ecologist with Flatwoods Consulting. We're here today on a request for a rezon of a portion of this property to Plan Development Residential and for the approval of a preliminary site plan for 99 single-family attached units. As Ms. Leidar indicated, this site is located at the southeast quadrant of Linger Lodge Road and I-75. On your right side of your screen, you see it is made up of three parcels under common ownership. And as you look at this property here on the left, you can see that this is in an area that has been largely developed over the years. It is, in the surrounding areas, primarily residential in nature, with both single-family as well as some multifamily uses with apartments to the north and some condos to the south. And importantly, it is an area that has been significantly developed with public infrastructure. We have the extensive roadway networks in this area, ease availability of utilities for extension to this site, as well as other public services that exist in this area. This is really one of the few remaining kind of vacant lands in this area. And so, we believe that is an appropriate timing and compatible for a request to Plan Development Residential with this site plan. The future land use category on the site, the site is unique for several reasons, and one of which is that it has three future land use categories traversing the site. We have the mixed-use designation on the western portion, which is adjacent to I-75, which the comprehensive plan generally envisions for a mix of residential and non-residential uses. We have the public semi-public 1 future land use category, which is for the Florida Power and Light Transmission Lines. And then we have the RES 1 category on the eastern portion, which, of course, is for your residential uses. The, when looking at the various characteristics of the site, some being the future land use and others I'll get into in a little bit with regards to the power lines and some environmental factors on the site, our client decided that with this surrounding area, the most appropriate use for this property is just a straight residential project. And so, that is why we have come forth with a request for a rezon of the portion of the property that is Plan Development and the portion that is A1 Suburban Agriculture to Plan Development Residential across the entirety of the project. And that proposed rezon is compatible with the surrounding area, which is largely Plan Development. We have significant areas of Plan Development Residential to the west, Plan Development Mixed Use to the north and south, and it's compatible with the RSF 1 to the east. There is some A1 zoning directly to the east, but those are residential uses as they exist today. So, again, we do have a request for a rezon, which it's about half the property to PDR, making it consistent with the rest of the currently zoned PDR section of the property, as well as for the approval of a preliminary site plan for 99 attached units. And because that's a little difficult to see, we did create a graphic color rendering that just kind of shows a little bit more detail, so you can clearly see the proposed project. And I spoke briefly about the unique characters of this site. And that's something we look at and take into account when planning the site plan for the project. And here, not only do we have some power lines and a power line easement down the middle, but on the western portion adjacent to I-75, there's a heavily vegetated and wooded area. And so, in planning for this project, our client looked to do a form of clustered development over on the eastern portion of the site, which is permitted by your comprehensive planning and land development code. And the results of that are severalfold. One, it allows the project to have a vast majority of open space. So, we're looking at 75% open space for this project overall. And that includes the open areas around the proposed single-family attached units, the power line easement, and more importantly, that large, heavily vegetated area to the west. And that's important for a couple of reasons. In particular, this project is in the entranceway, which, you know, we have that view shed from I-75. So, preserving that large vegetated area keeps that view shed protected from I-75, as well as maintaining that great buffer from sound and view, not just for future residents of this project, but for those that exist to the east and to the north. There is one wetland on the site. It is in the northwest corner, so it will remain in that area that's undisturbed. We have no proposed wetland impacts. And that includes no wetland buffer encroachments, particularly with regards to the Braden River to the south of the site. So, that 50-foot required wetland buffer will be maintained in accordance with your land development code. As Rosina mentioned, we are in the Braden River watershed and special treatment. We are not requesting any deviations from your code requirements. We will, through the course of development, be required to prove that we have met the 25% pre-development flow rate reduction, as well as 150% water quality treatment. And that's in part why you see the several large ponds on the site that will provide for that water quality treatment, as well as it provide a nice amenity for the residents, potential walking trails around those areas in the open space. As for some of the specific project conditions, again, given the unique character of the site, we are clustering on that eastern portion. There will be one access to Linger Lodge Road. We are providing a stubout for a potential future neighborhood connection, which is encouraged by your land development code. There's no plans that I know of right now to have any connection to the east, but should that property be developed, it provides a rational connection point, as this will be a public roadway. We are also providing right-of-way reservations along Linger Lodge Road for any future expansion of that roadway and along I-75 as well. We are providing for a meeting the required buffers, which include 20-foot roadway buffers, both on Linger Lodge and I-75, although the buffer on I-75 will be much larger, given that preservation area, as well as our 15-foot perimeter greenbelt buffer. We, when working with staff and looking at the access area on this site, we did agree to, D.R. Horton agreed to go ahead and construct not only the sidewalks on both sides of the road internally, but sidewalks on both sides of Linger Lodge Road in front of the project or adjacent, and provide a pedestrian crossway. So, that will provide a connection to the existing sidewalk on Ranch Lake Boulevard that goes from Linger Lodge all the way up to State Road 70. So, that will provide this neighborhood a pedestrian walkway up that road, as well as if the county should so choose to extend that sidewalk to the east. As I mentioned earlier, utilities are available in the area for extension to the site with capacity available to service the site. Our traffic consultant, Michael Yates, which I believe you know very well with Palm Traffic, he performed the required transportation study, which was submitted and approved by your transportation staff. That indicates, even with the projected trips from this site, which are relatively low with the 99 units, the affected roadways will maintain or exceed their adopted level of service. So, we are meeting or exceeding those requirements. With this request, we do have two requests for specific approval. I know I've touched on the unique character of the site and how we're structuring this on just the eastern portion. So, we will just have one roadway, but that will be a cul-de-sac that exceeds 800 feet. And although we're not required two means of access for unit count, we do exceed that threshold for 800 feet. However, what we have worked with your staff and will provide is an emergency access that will go from the, you can kind of see it between the third pond from the top and the fourth, that will go back to Linger Lodge Road. And so, that will really meet the intent of that code provision, is that, you know, in cases of emergency, you have adequate either emergency service. cases of emergency, you have adequate either emergency services ingressing into the property or if people need to get out. And so, we believe that will be sufficient, and we will, of course, continue to work with your staff with input from emergency service, fire, EMS, to make sure that is constructed to a suitable roadway for those vehicles. The second request for specific approval, this has to do with the entranceway requirements. In Section 900.5 of the Land Development Code, it states that you can develop in the entranceway, and to seek administrative approval, you have to meet several criteria. And one of those criteria is that you will preserve 75% of all trees exceeding 24 inches. What that section also states is that if you don't exceed those, then you go Plan Development, and which exactly what we're doing here. But staff requested that we submit a specific approval request for that, and so we have. But regardless of that fact, I still feel that our project as a whole really meets the intent of that provision. We're providing all of this preserved vegetation and wooded area on the west side of the property and next to that entranceway roadway, I-75. So I believe, you know, with our plan, we are going to meet or exceed the intent of those provisions of that code regardless. And so, as to wrap up, we looked at this area, the entire surrounding area. We feel that it is an appropriate timing for residential development on the site. It is compatible with the surrounding development trends of single-family, as well as some multifamily in the area. There is adequate public infrastructure to serve the site with good access up to major state roads and non-residential support uses. We have reviewed your staff's staff report, and I thank Dorothy for all the work on this project, and we agree with its findings, findings that this project is consistent with the comprehensive plan and in compliance with all of the Land Development Code provisions, and respectfully request your positive recommendation to the board. I'm available for any questions. Our team of professionals are as well. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
I just had one question. I was involved with the use of the land underneath the power lines up there at the Walmart Center, where the Texas Roadhouse is. What is your agreement, or what is the engagement that you have with the power company for that land, and what rights do you have, and how does that play into your submission?
Well, we have, there is an existing easement, and we're not proposing to do any development in that easement. For our emergency access, it does go out at an existing driveway under that easement. CAM has been talking with FPNL, keeping them in the loop, and don't see any issues with it, but we're not proposing any development within that easement area.
And you have rights to do the things that you've designed with their prerogatives that they have for ownership?
Correct. And we could have rights in addition to that, you know, in those easements, you often have ability to do roads crossing and things like that. But with the way we've designed the site, with preserving that other area, we don't see any need to do that here, so we haven't pursued any of that type of development under the power line.
So with that easement running through there, or their land rights, is the consideration of the 75% of green space considering that or not?
It does include it. It does include it, and you're, that's in line with your Land Development Code, you're able to include those areas as open space. And it is able to be included, even though that's PSP1, future land use, you, your comprehensive plan provides when you have those for density calculations, because you can spread it. You count it based on the two adjacent land uses with the center line.
And is there any intention or thought on making the buffer piece that you have on I-75 and that piece engageable by the community?
Yes, we're talking with our client about doing walking trails and stuff in the area, but we need to look at that and make sure that it's done in a smart, responsible way, where we're not, you know, having to tear out trees or impact the area.
Building homeless camps.
Right.
That's a thought.
Mr. Roth.
I noticed that you have five ponds. Are those there currently, or are they going to be put in, and for what reason?
Those will be constructed to serve the stormwater needs of the site. It's for water quality treatment. They're not there existing today. That will be developed with the project, so that's to capture all the water on site, get that 50, or 25% runoff reduction, as well as 150% water quality treatment. So that is to serve the site upon build-out.
Next question. Are there any environmental issues that have not been addressed?
We have our environmental consultant here, Carrie Kelly. We did submit an environmental study that was reviewed with your staff, and we don't see any environmental concerns. You know, of course, at this stage of development, there's several more steps to go through from an environmental perspective.
Thank you.
Mr. Grimes, what is the origin of the unusual zoning designation for the agricultural portion that's adjacent to Linger Lodge Road?
That was the design of the planners back in 1990, when the Land Development Code was adoption, adopted. They put some PDR in various areas, and why those lines were that way, I can't answer that.
Okay, just a remnant of a previous, so there may have been more that was probably already rezoned, so, okay, all right, it just seems a little unusual, so.
So, we have a public comment from Ms. Morton regarding traffic. Could you address that?
Yes, and I'd like to bring up Michael Yates to kind of talk a little bit more about the traffic. He knows it better than I ever will, so.
Let's hope so.
So with regard to that, Mr. Yates, if you could please speak to the serviceability of the road, the current classification, and how it maybe is viewed by the county currently?
Okay. Good morning. Michael Yates with Palm Traffic, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
So, we, sorry, I'm getting my graphics together. So I'll go through a little bit on the traffic and probably too much information, but just want to go through at least the comments. It looks like it's hard to see. But essentially, 99 single-family attached units would generate 46 a.m. peak hour trips and 55 p.m. peak hour trips, so a relatively low trip generation for the project. We looked at, as part of our TIS and operational analysis, we used the county's procedures for evaluating the roadway. So that includes taking what the existing traffic is on the roadway, what is vested or reserved, and then adding our project traffic on top of that. So the roadway would operate at Level of Service C. The standard is D. We also, because we did an operational analysis, we looked a little more into the traffic than, you know, a typical TIS, where we also went out and did a.m. peak hour traffic counts. You know, a lot of people are concerned about the a.m. traffic more so than the p.m. traffic, but they were relatively similar in volume. You can see the graph here. The gray is the capacity of the roadway, 1190. That is based on the level of service tables from Manatee County, and the existing traffic is there about 350 cars. We add about 50 cars to that, so 400 in total, and so you're less than half of the capacity of the roadway. And so, as Mr. Grimes alluded to, we did look at the roadway section, and what we were proposing is to have the sidewalk along the north side of Linger Lodge that connects up to the Ranch Lake existing sidewalk. So today, from a pedestrian connectivity standpoint, there was no way to get there without crossing the road randomly, and then there was no sidewalk on the north side. So we thought this was important as a pedestrian feature to allow people to cross the road and to walk on the north side, because along Linger Lodge, there were no existing sidewalks in this area. So the sidewalk at Ranch Lake just ends right there at the corner.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Yates?
I have a question. So I'm just curious, since you have these parcels of land that are part of the development, which go all the way to I-75, just curious why your commitment to develop the Linger Lodge piece only is the piece that the houses are on? So, in other words, that parcel that's designed and goes all the way back up to Walmart is connected to this whole area here. I'm just curious why, it seems somewhat arbitrary that you just stopped at that one point.
I'm a little confused as to your.
Your improvements along Linger Lodge Road are only on the residential piece, not on the shared access?
Are you talking about on the north?
On the north side, Linger Lodge Road, where you're doing these improvements you just spoke about, right?
Yes.
There is your parcel, which you are incorporating in your PUD, which is the power line section and then the undeveloped piece on I-75, and you take no action on that, those other two parcels? I just wanted to understand what's the logic to that?
Yeah, so we were, to our west is the FDOT Limited Access Facility, and you get into the bridge section of the crossover of Linger Lodge. So there was no point in bringing the sidewalk any further to the west, particularly on either side of that road. It would not go anywhere, and there was no pedestrian connectivity, and you're getting into the DOT Limited Access Facility.
Well, so the only question I have is, I kind of go out there. So my curiosity is why you wouldn't go to the far side of that traffic, so that all the traffic turning to the east off that access road going north and south, your pedestrians would all be on the other side of that instead of in that traffic flow?
Is the existing sidewalk on the east or west of?
The east side of Ranch Lake.
Okay.
So I have the graphic here, so you can see. So this is Ranch Lake, right here.
Yes, sir.
So the sidewalk is right here today, and it turns and ends right here. And so what we are doing is providing the sidewalk along the north side, all the way along the north side of our property frontage, and then doing a mid-block crosswalk on the east side of our driveway. This gets people further away from the intersection, gets further people further away from the ramp, and then allows them to cross safely away from the intersection and coming over the bridge.
That makes sense to me.
Did that answer your question?
Yeah, I was thinking that you would go past the traffic, because all that traffic, the majority of that traffic, when it comes south, goes to the east. It doesn't go west. So I was thinking, take the pedestrians away from that traffic count on the far side and put it over there and then cross over, because you just, you don't have the same flow of traffic there as you do on the other side.
Yeah, and we moved it as far east as we could, where the volumes were lower, away from the intersection, and where we controlled the right-of-way, because, you know, obviously there's ditch sections out there, and so some tight right-of-way to work with.
Understood. Thanks.
All right, very good. Thank you. Any additional questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much. With that, we'll go to the staff presentation. Who do we have for staff? Good morning. It's rainy, you've been busy. Still morning.
Yes, good morning. Again, Dorothy Rainey for staff, and I have been sworn, and I will do a quick run-through on this, because the applicant's presentation was pretty thorough. Again, just the highlights, the specific approval. I would like to point out, there were two options. However, it appears the applicant settled on the one on the right, which is a shorter distance. There's, the stipulation that we've provided gives them the option to do either option, and to determine which one they're going to use at the final site plan. And of course, it has to be approved by staff, whoever's reviewing for that. So, you know, staff may say, well, we think the one on the left is probably better and accommodates us better, but it's going to be up to them at that stage. So I just thought I'd show those two access points. And then, of course, going to the positives and negatives. So the positives are that the, let's see, I can't read it from there. The project is proposing 75% open space, which exceeds the 35% requirement for the project being in a coastal planning area. The additional open space is mostly located parallel to I-75, where it will provide visual buffering along an entranceway, and I should add also, you know, noise buffering. The negatives include, the project is proposing a cul-de-sac longer than 800 linear feet, it's 1310, as the only internal road to the access to the 99 lots. And then also, the project is proposed within both coastal planning area and coastal evacuation area. Mitigating factors would be that the applicant is providing the two options I just mentioned for the alternative access to the 1310 linear foot cul-de-sac, and a stipulation is in place to require the applicant utilize one of the options to be approved, like I said, with the final site plan. And also, the applicant will be required to prepare and submit a hurricane evacuation plan as stipulated, and a stipulation is provided to include the notice, in the notice to buyer, I think I'm missing part of that, let the residents know that it's subject to evacuation. And our conclusion, of course, is that the proposed rezone to the PDR with the preliminary site plan to develop the 99 single-family lots and associate infrastructure, together with the specific approval requests and the stipulations provided, can be found to be consistent with the comprehensive plan and in compliance with the applicable provisions of the Land Development Code. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Very good. Any questions for staff? Okay, thank you very much. With that, we'll go to the public comment portion of the hearing. I have one speaker signed up. If you would, please step forward, state your name, and that you have been sworn in your county of record, and it's Eliza Evans, is that right?
Elise Evans, Manatee County resident, and I have been duly sworn in.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like to address the fact that the public was not duly notified of this project. The couple of things I have, is the camera's on correct. Here's the first sign on June 30th at 3:42. I passed by a couple of hours earlier going out shopping, and when I came back, there was the sign lying on the ground. So I contacted Manatee County about it, and this was their response here. They would have somebody go out and look at it, or fix it. Actually, they said the applicant will go out and fix it. The next thing is, July 8th at 1:00 p.m., there's no signage. This is the driveway access to the current property. This is Ranch Lake Boulevard over here. So then we continued, and we have July 8th at 6:39 p.m., driveway Ranch Lake Boulevard here, still no sign. 7:10 at 12:47 p.m., no sign. Here we have 7:10 and 7:19, no sign. 7:11 at 5:56 p.m., no sign. Finally, on 7:12, one day before the meeting, and one day after, the comments are allowed to be submitted, there's the sign. There's the 8240 Linger Lodge Road, and there is your sign. So this was never notified. In addition, I posted this on social media, because the sign never came up, and this was one of the responses I got when I asked, has anybody seen the sign? And it says, "It's next to Linger Lodge Road at the far left of the front yard of the single house that's set far back. We pass that house every day, but this is the first time it's been up that I've seen." So we were never notified of this, and for that reason, I think you should not approve this.
Is that, is that everything?
That is everything.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Can we ask questions?
If it's relevant.
I'm curious, do you have any particular thoughts on the project itself, other than the process? I get that 100%.
Yeah, okay, yes, I do have a thought on the process.
And again, your time.
Okay, my time's going to, oh, okay, thank you. There is multifamily housing on Ranch Lake, far from us, but everything east of I-75 and right before the Johnson Preserve, and south of Linger Lodge Road are single-family homes on one or two acres. Now that we have Braden Woods to the east, and we have Terra to the west, and as far as the gentleman saying that road is adequate, Ranch Lake Boulevard is really pretty narrow, and you have to make several stops and left turns to get out on 70. So the only other accesses are Terra Boulevard and Braden Woods. And I just don't think it's right to have people driving through a subdivision like that constantly, and all those cars. And 45 cars per day, I don't think so, because the average family, new modern family, has two cars. So that would be 198 cars per day.
That's presuming everybody drives every day, but.
Well, okay, but anyway, that's the thing. Anyway, it's just not in keeping with the standards of our neighborhood, even though... standards of our neighborhood, even though a couple of blocks away on Ranch Lake, they're all multifamily homes.
All right, thank you very much, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Again, that was the only speaker I had signed up, so if there's anybody else in the audience who wishes to come forward, please do so. You have to actually come forward, state your name, and that you have been sworn.
Well, I've been sitting, this is, my name is Doncy Beard, I have been sworn.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of Braden Woods.
Thank you.
And, I'm not a very good speaker, I've been impressed by what I've heard today. And I have to say, though, being in Braden Woods, the traffic truly is one issue. We have, I sent in my comments, I don't know if anyone got to read them, because I don't, I'm not really techie, so. It did come in, though. And my point was, we have, in Braden Woods, children that are picked up at early, really early in the morning, it is pitch black, we have no, very few streetlights, and I think the added traffic is really a safety concern in that respect. Also, I heard when they were going to do this subdivision, that the power line area would block a lot of the noise from that, from 75. I can tell you, I live away from that area, and there's traffic noise. And we actually, at one time, asked for the big walls to go up, to stop the noise from coming over, but that didn't happen, because I guess we don't have enough multiple housing or something there. But anyway, that was blocked. But it is, it's a change. I know people need places to live, but that area, talking about wildlife, since they have the Johnson Preserve, all of those animals kind of moved around, kind of into our neighborhood, and I know they're back in that area that's going to be built up now. So I'm against it, but, you know, you're the ones that have to make the decision. I just feel it's maybe not really well thought out. When they talk about putting the ponds out there, the little lakes in the subdivision, that noise from the interstate will bounce off that and come on in. I've lived in an area where that did happen, so that's just my opinion. I'm hoping that it doesn't go through, or is amended in some way to put four houses on one lot. We have one house on an acre, and that seems like enough to me. So, good luck with all that, and thanks for listening.
Very good, thank you. Anybody else? You have to come forward. You don't have to be recognized, you just have to step up.
It's a Girl Scout thing. Hi, my name is Lisa Prank, and I am sworn in.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you for hearing us all out today, we really appreciate it. I am the president of Braden Woods Homeowners Association, phases one through four. I am not a good public speaker either. I agree with what everyone here has said. Mr. Yates, I appreciate what you've said, but our front yards are on Braden Run, and unlike Terra, and even River Club has the same situation that we do, their front yards are on Braden Run as well. Terra at least has secondary roads, where, like Lakewood Ranch, the homes are off the main thoroughfare. We are inundated now with traffic. We are getting the traffic that are going to the apartment buildings, we're getting the traffic that's coming off of Lakewood Ranch, they want to cut off that corner at Lakewood Ranch and 70. We do not have double striping like River Club has. I've already called the Sheriff's Department to please come down and do something with our traffic. I represent 321 homeowners in Braden Woods. Everyone is scared to death about what is happening here. And, by the way, the gal, ma'am, thank you very much, she's absolutely correct, there was no posting of any sign whatsoever on a public hearing. I found out about it last night at 7:00. And that's really not fair to the other residents who would have at least had some input. I also agree, the traffic, there is more, if you're putting up 99 homes, kids, they do drive, let's say you have 1.5 cars, 1.25 cars per home, that's more than 50 extra cars. We've got people now speeding down Braden Run, we're having a hard time controlling our traffic. You're going to decrease our property values by adding this additional amount of traffic onto our roads, because you go out by Texas Roadhouse, you can only make a right. You go out Lakewood Ranch Boulevard, you get a light, and you're going, they make a left. The only avenue to get out from Ranch Lake Boulevard and Linger Lodge is down Braden Run, where there's a light. That's it. And on top of that, we've got campers, we've got a five gross weight tonnage limit on Braden Run, we're already got all those campers coming down there. And we, I, we're trying, I'm calling the commissioner, I've called Vanessa Bowes' office, to try to do something already about our traffic. And having all this, and Linger Lodge is a great place, I think the extra 99 homes on that part, you're just adding more, it's just adding way more traffic and more people than we can handle in that area. Please, please, we request very much so, please do not allow this to go through.
Okay, thank you very much.
Please, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else, please come forward, state your name, and that you have been sworn, and you'll have three minutes.
I've been sworn in. My name is Thomas Faircloth, I live on 84th Street Court East, which is right across the street from this property they want to develop. I came to Manatee County when I was in second grade, I went to Ballard Elementary School, went to the brand-new Jesse P. Miller School. I've seen this county change from a pristine paradise, beautiful city and county, to next to toilet now. With the increased development, I used to live in West Bradenton, in my grandmother's old house, I bought it from my relatives when they passed away. And that neighborhood, when I was a child, we had a doctor next door on one side, a developer builder on the other side, county commissioner lived across the street, it was beautiful. It deteriorated quickly, and I wouldn't let my dog live there anymore. I moved out to where I live now, in the early 80s, and I brought, I bought two acres with a house on it. I've had several occasions with the planning and development, I went to visit them from time to time, very nice people. I expressed I wanted to buy some property there that was vacant at the time, and told them what I wanted to do with it. Well, they took me in the back room, and they showed me the maps. When my house was originally built, it was zoned five acres by, and it was a watershed district. In other words, they didn't want a density putting pollutants in the river, which is not far from my house. In 35 years, over 35 years, I never put one bag of fertilizer on my lawn to have it wash off and go down the river. I pay a lot of taxes to enjoy this property, and my neighbors, and Braden Woods is on one side of me. Recently, they developed across the interstate from me, put all these houses where you could shake hands with your neighbors. They said that would never happen on our side of the interstate. The county planner showed me, the Army Corps of Engineers designated five acres for one house because of that problem. When they allowed my developer to build on two acres, they violated the agreement with the Army Corps of Engineers. They said they would never do it again. I pay almost $6,000 a year in property tax. They finally got rid of the ghetto Linger Lodge, cleaned it up, it's beautiful now. They got rid of the child molesters that lived in there, the dilapidated trailers that were there for years, people living year-round. Now you want to put 100 homes and build another ghetto across the street from me, and put 100 families in there, two, three, maybe 400 people, and I'm against it. I think we should try and maintain, and as much as we can. But if you do go ahead with this, I request to reduce my taxes in half, because I will no longer enjoy.
I'll make a note of that.
Thank you. Again, is there anybody else who wishes to come forward and speak on this application? Come forward, state your name, and that you have been sworn.
Carol Phelps, Myakka City, Manatee County.
And that you've been sworn?
I have been sworn.
This isn't your first time.
I have been sworn, yeah. First off, I really want to thank the people who have shown up here. This is, was previously a part of my district, when we were in District Five, it's no longer part of my district, but I'm very familiar with Linger Lodge, they've done some tremendous things there. I'll be going there Sunday for their Bloody Mary specials. And these are people who are homeowners, who have pride in their community. And one thing that we're seeing with the massive amount of development is our rise in crime. Every day, even in the best gated communities, we're seeing a rise in crime, and this makes it much more difficult for us to back the blue, when we're packing so many people in a place that what happens when you put a lot of rats in the same cage, they end up feeding on each other. The traffic issues over here with the school children, I actually took a ride down there and followed a school bus, and there's no accommodating for this. I thought that our kids out in the country had a hard time sitting out there in the dark waiting for a school bus, and spending two hours of their school day on a bus, but what I saw in the Braden and Terra, following some of the buses around, this is going to create some very dangerous situations for our kids. And the last but not least thing that I think begins a legal challenge to this, that we are trying to get everyone to take more seriously. The signs do not work, they're not fair to us, they are not sufficient, they are not adequate, there is not enough information. Now, I've already been known as the sign lady about this for about four years now. They don't work. You have people, this is a legal obligation that you have to post a public notice. It is also a legal obligation that you have to put those signs up, and to put those signs up in an adequate amount of time, and for those signs to be adequate for a sufficient public notice. You have eyewitnesses, you have people telling you that the job was not done right and adequately. And we've tried to tell you all along that it doesn't work, and look at some of the progressions that are in other counties. Sarasota County requires a neighborhood meeting, Manatee County does not have that requirement. When people are telling you, we're trying to follow the rules, we recognize that you're trying to follow the rules.
Thank you.
And when it hasn't been followed, you have a legal impediment. We did not receive adequate public notice. And that needs to be addressed, because it is a legal issue.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to come forward? All right, no, you, sorry, you cannot, no, you can't speak from the audience, and you can't, I'm sorry, you can't do it again. It creates a violation of the process, and it creates issues. You will have an opportunity at the Board of County Commission meeting to speak, though. All right, with that, any, all right, it's a gentleman who knows the process.
Mark Vander.
Can we?
Can we get the folks in the back?
I can't hear. Just give him a moment. I think it goes through a soundboard.
Carol, you broke it.
I thought you were cutting Carol off, so that you had a time. There we go.
All right.
Okay, great, yeah, Mark Vander, Manatee County, have been sworn, and, yeah, the, I'd like to know, is this going to be deed-restricted development? Will there be gated development? Are there any site plans more specific, showing how it's laid out, any roads, that sort of thing? One area of my concern with this development that's been going on around the county is that, are the densities? I mean, we have the Braden River nearby, I'm not sure if this parcel is in the Braden River protected watershed area or not. I know there's been a lot of development along the river, I don't know how much protection you want to give to the Evars Reservoir, but I can tell you, further out east, the Manatee Lake Reservoir has got a really bad cyanobacterial algae problem right now. And when you start increasing the density of your developments in these areas, in these watersheds, it makes it only worse. Now, one resident was proactive enough to be mindful and not use a lot of fertilizer, or any fertilizer, to, for fear it would run off and contaminate the river, that's very commendable. Back in the old days, 20, 30, 40, 50 years ago, when I was living here, people were seeming to be more mindful about that. Around about 2010, 2012, we came to the commission meetings, and we remarked that if you don't do better planning, more proactive planning, more smart development, then, instead of Bedford Falls, you're going to wind up with Pottersville, okay? You're going to change the entire complexion of the social structure of the county, and you're going to have more transient residents, and the overall quality of the neighborhoods is going to go down. And I see that happening, the folks that came before me on this development see that happening, and I just think we could do better. I say, don't approve this rezone, thank you.
Thank you. Again, is there anybody else who wishes to come forward, speak on this application? All right, seeing no one else come forward, we're going to close the public comment portion of the, of the hearing, and open it up for questions. First of all, Mr. Grimes, was this application properly noticed?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so let me go through the notice requirements. One, I know there was a comment about a neighborhood workshop, we did do, hosted a neighborhood workshop, we sent out mail notice, as required by the Land Development Code for that, and although there might not be a requirement in your code, I can assure you, staff has been pushing us to do them on every project.
How many people attended, though?
We did not have any attendance on that, and we sent mail notice, as required by the code, with 500 feet around the entire perimeter of the project. We sent the scheduling legal description of the project to the property appraiser, they create the list of all property owners within that boundary, I think we had 64, or somewhere around there, that were noticed via mail.
Okay.
And then, we do the same thing for this planning commission, we do the mail notice, that same 500-foot perimeter, and also, you have the notice posted on your website, and we did post a sign for this site. I have a few images. So this was from the original posting, if we can see this, the original posting, we did put that right at the front of the property. We were notified at one point that it had fallen, or been tossed to the side, so we went out there, and it would, either blown back, or for whatever reason was back in the bushes, it was pulled out, reposted, and then we were noticed two days ago, that somebody said it was not there again, so went back out, and it was completely missing at this point, somebody, I don't know what happened, but it was not there. We immediately told the county, they said they were putting together another sign, and we went out yesterday morning and put that up as soon as we got it from the county. So, you know, that's one of the reasons we have these multiple mechanisms of notice in your Land Development Code and statutory, you know, for these things, and we have met our requirements of your code for those notices. Of course, we have still another, over 30 days before this comes back for the board, I will make sure to have somebody go out there and check that sign regularly, to make sure it doesn't get blown over or removed, and, so that's what we have for the notice, Mr. Chair.
Could I ask one other?
Mr. Roth.
On this property, how many signs were supposed to be erected, or was once sufficient?
One was the requirement for this, we really only have that one area up on Linger Lodge Road, to the south is the Braden River, to the, to the west is I-75, so we have that one sign requirement for this, this project.
Mr.
Have you gotten any references through the QR code that's on the sign, that people can just shoot and scan? Has anybody responded to, through that?
I haven't received any direct, however, you know, over the last week or so, we did, they. However, you know, over the last week or so, we did, the county did receive many, many public comments that were forwarded to me by Dorothy and I did review them and I believe...
Those go to the county, correct? And those are the ones we have in the, um, in the package?
Yes, I received them. Comments and were posted in the system.
Right.
So evidently somehow, my, my thought is somehow people have seen it.
Yeah, we have the, the...
I'm just saying, I want to...
We can provide the information for the mail notice too.
Okay.
And definitely somebody get the notice because we get a significant amount of comments.
And then there's also the, the recent...
And the applicant has been proactive, putting back the, the sign.
Right. With regard to this, did the applicant take the sign down?
Sorry?
Did the applicant take the sign down?
We did not take the sign down. We've only put it back up.
So it could have been somebody else. I know you didn't say that, but it could have very well been somebody else who thought they were interrupting the process, remove the sign and toss it in the bushes or, I mean, that, that's a possibility. There's no evidence of that, but...
And they blow over. This is, these are not very durable.
I, I would suggest that if somebody was trying to interfere with the process, that that kind of has a counter to it. It, you know, it hurts people that can't come out and then speak or voice an opinion on that. So just maybe tell your neighbors, communicate the issue. Word of mouth is probably better than a sign anyways, so.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to mention that it is only 500 feet.
Yeah.
And 84th Street Court East is more than 80, is more than 500 feet from the site.
From, from the information I saw, I think there's probably around 40 properties within 500 feet, so. So, all right, I'm sorry, did that?
That's all, I was just curious at the response. You can tell whether you're actively marketing something by response. So if we've gotten responses, it's, something's happening.
Yes. All right. And then, um...
I, I just have one other thought. I just, I'm, I'm very positively influenced by the fact that the area underneath the power lines will be engaged and part of the other side of the property. In other words, I think that having 75% of the, the, the space or the land or the site being a green space is significant. In other words, everybody talks about not doing development, but if developments are done right and you get 75% of the land not being covered in asphalt or concrete or whatever, that's a positive thing. So I'm very excited to hear ultimately when this goes to the board, what you're able to accomplish with that and how that becomes part of the community access. Because that walkway, there are people that do a lot of walking and riding around that side over there, come down Linger Lodge bikes and all that. So I would love to be able to think that that could turn into something that's more than just for that community and it adds back to the community there.
Uh, the, the other, I remember the other point I was going to ask about is with regard to the, um, the allowable, the development that's being presented. We had one of the neighbors address or bring up concerns related to the previous, previously restricted uses in this area. This application is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Do you know when these modifications were made?
Uh, these are in place with the adoption of the comprehensive plan in 89. Uh, replace these future land use categories and, sorry? And when we looked at our maximum allowable density utilizing these three future land use categories, that'd be about 4.17. We're proposing 2.89, 8, 8.7, I think.
Okay. All right. And the, the, again, I've mentioned it before, one of the things we look at is the comprehensive plan, that it's consistent with, with the comprehensive plan. So, any other questions for the applicant?
No.
We'll go to staff closing comments. Next, uh...
Mr. Chair, while staff's coming down, I just wanted to clarify that the applicant's testimony was under oath and they're also required to file an affidavit of notice as to their posting, mailing. And Bobby Roy, gender coordinator, filed her affidavit of notice as to publication on the website.
Right.
And the fact the signs blow around all the time does not create a legal issue that there's no notice given.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Rainey, if you would, please, closing comments.
Sure. Thank you again, Dorothy Rainey for staff and I have been sworn. I just wanted to go back to address some of the speakers that came up about the project, about the, it is in the Evers watershed protection area. I believe almost, let's see, Evers watershed. The whole thing is within the Evers watershed. And as a result, we have stipulations that cover the require, extra requirements for stormwater and runoff and all that. The stipulation number C2 says this project shall be required to reduce the calculated pre-development flow rate by 25% for all stormwater, outfall flow directly or indirectly into Braden River watershed. Modeling shall be used to determine pre and post development flows. And then also stipulation C3, this project shall be required to provide 150% water quality treatment for the Braden River watershed. There's a few others, but that, those are the two main ones that ensure protection of the Evers watershed. So I just wanted to mention.
Those, that's consistent with every project in the Evers.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Right. But just like the speakers that came up, I want to make sure they understood that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, applicant, closing comments?
Again, Kyle Grimes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe, you know, through our presentation, we've really hit on a lot of those issues raised by the public, particularly with regard to traffic. I think we, we've really explained this area in that we meet the requirements of the comp plan and land development code. We've, we've, we've touched on notice already. You know, I, I just think this is a great area. We, we hear a lot lately that we want to see developments in areas where we have infrastructure and things in place. You know, this is very clearly a, an area the county that has that infrastructure, has ease of connection to utilities. The county's planned for it. So we feel it is a very appropriate area for this development and excited for the, you know, the things that D.R. Horton is putting in place with regards to those preservation areas and the large tracts of open space. So appreciate your recommendation of approval. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right, we're going to close the public hearing and open it up for discussion, debate, or consideration.
I got a couple of comments because I think it's a, it's a fair concern for, for Braden Woods with the traffic coming. I'm guilty. I don't speak through there, but I cut through to, to River Club to go see friends. But if I'm looking on the map, it, you know, it's, it would be a real zigzag for them to come out of this community range. Ranch Lake Boulevard, if I'm looking on the map, is a really direct route out and they can get gas on the way out. So I'm just looking at it going, it, it'd be a, it'd be a big zigzag through Braden Woods. So maybe it's not as much of a concern. The preserve, that's why, a lot of trees as a buffer. So there was a noise comment, you know, in Braden Woods, you don't have that. So you would hear more noise from the, from the road. Last comment was, you know, about bringing down the neighborhood and stuff like that. I live in District 5. There's a desperate need for affordable housing. If you've got some 20-something-year-old kids in your house and you're trying to get them out of there. I'm just saying. I don't think that the, you know, D.R. Horton is building a slum here. We've got all that, we've got all that space, there, the preserve. I think this is good for District 5. In that way, we need affordable housing. It's, it's crazy out there, right? Imagine coming in, you're in your twenties now, how do you afford anything? So in that way, my comments for what it's worth.
Thank you. Any, any other thoughts?
I, I just like to, you know, I live in Braden Woods, so full disclosure, and I drove by there and I disclose that, that my wife and I were talking about it. And I can say this, the traffic there is problematic, you know? In the last 12 years, it's just gotten worse. And by the way, I grew up in South Florida. It's going to get worse. However, when you can keep 75% of an area undeveloped, I, I just think that's a good, that's a good barometer for me. I, I, I understand about the traffic because these are national standards and they make them up and a bunch, no offense to engineers, but they make up these numbers and they bring them in here. And you're, you're fantastic. You believe it every single time. But I don't. I mean, it's just not, it's just not accurate to my opinion. However, having said all that, the engagement of this property, the way it's designed and what it does for the green belt, because I see the deer that run along there and they run that corridor and they run to the river and they run all the way through our neighborhood, my backyard. I think this 75% open area gives them a better chance. That, that's my opinion. And I think that's valuable. The hawks that are there, the eagles that we see, you know, all that, all the bunnies, all, this kind of development progresses that in a way that I think is a balance between full development of, you know, 250 units stacked on top of each other versus having some open space. So I'm going to vote for it. I'm going to add traffic in my neighborhood. I live on Braden Run Road. I mean, I don't, I wish they wouldn't, but they, they have a right, they have their right. So I'm going to vote for it.
Are you volunteering to sell your car?
I do a lot of running. Does that help?
Very good. All right, any, anyone else? All right, let's go ahead and call the, the matter. Is there a, uh, motion? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Smock, a second by Mr. Turner. If you would, please go ahead and vote. All right, we have the results. Motion passes five to zero, again with Mr. De La Zine, Ms. Kiba not present. So that concludes item number three. The next item, item number four is conservation zoning districts. Is, and this is quasi-judicial?
Well, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
It's actually legislative because it's an area Y, county initiated rezon.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So it's still difficult to disclose ex parte communications, hundreds of parcels.
Okay. So this is legislative?
The next two is legislative.
Okay, all right. Legislative, so we don't have to be concerned about ex parte communication. So that, that means the, I'm sorry, the staff is presenting this, making this presentation?
Yes.
Okay. All right, if we could, please clear the room, if, if you could. We're still trying to conduct the, the hearing here. So Ms. Leidar, do you want to go ahead and enter item number four into the record, please?
Are these together or no?
Yeah. If you could, please, please take it out of the, excuse me. Yeah.
And then number four, C-2310 and C-2315 through C-2320, con, conservation zoning district rezon, Manatee County at all owners. And it's a rezon of more or less 23,104 acres from A, general agriculture, A1 agriculture suburban, RFs 1, residential single family, RFs 2, residential single family, RFs 3, residential single family, RFs 4.5, residential single family, RFs 6, residential single families, RDD 4.5, residential duplex, and RDD 6, residential duplex, ex-extraction, PDMH, planned development mobile home, PDR, planned development residential, and PDRB, planned development recreational vehicle to the conservation zoning district. And the case manager is Mr. Charles Andrews.
Good morning. If you would, could you please present your application?
Good morning, Commissioners. Hi, Charles Andrews, Principal Planner with Development Services. I have been sworn, this is a rezoning item, and I've got a presentation here. So this item here is for, it's a county-initiated rezone. It's going to conservation on multiple properties here throughout the county. This, like I said, it's a zoning atlas map amendment, multiple zoning districts ranging from Euclidian and PD. And this is kind of a follow-up to what we had presented as a county-initiated comprehensive plan amendment back in March 9th to the Planning Commission. And this is basically a cleanup to follow that, so both maps are consistent. There we go. So just a few maps here that I've, I've got our GIS team that made of the general areas here that we're looking at. And this is in the, like, the northwest portion of the county. This is the Terracee Preserve, just a few areas here throughout the county. Emerson Point's on the top there, Tidy Island to the south, areas that were just historically marked for conservation use, preservation use. They were never updated though on the zoning map. So just a few, just random little pieces here. Naturally, doing every single parcel would be, you know, hundreds of maps, a lot of different things here. And I just wanted to generalize the, the areas here for the commission. Areas out here by the reservoir and whatnot, going to conservation, some state-owned properties here, out here by Wachula Road and whatnot.
If I could just ask you to, this is on.
To include your presentation, that, no, who are the owners of the property?
Sure.
And by not taking away private development rights.
Correct. And I, yeah, I will get to that momentarily, but yes, these are various property or publicly owned entities ranging from Manatee County, from the state of Florida, New College Foundation with that Tidy Island property, Des Moines National Monument. There, there's a few items in here that we've got, that are public entities that we have in the packet there. They were notified of this, just basically identifying them for what they are. And we're not taking any rights from them, we're just acknowledging what they were in existence. Like I said, the rezoning is proposed, it's a follow-up here, the comprehensive plan map amendment that the Commissioners saw back in March 9th. It's tentatively scheduled for adoption by the BCC on August 24th of this year. And this is to achieve that Class 4 rating I spoke about back in March through the community rating system in efforts to provide an increase for discounts for flood insurance premiums by 5%. So this would give residents that apply for a flood insurance premium a 30% reduction. This is something that is sought after by a lot of jurisdictions. So we're in that position to get to a Class 4, which is, is kind of hard to get to, but we're hoping to, fingers crossed, to get to that. Like I said, the rezoning request, it touches on over 23,000 acres. Properties are owned by multiple public and nonprofit entities. One entity that has a lot of property here is Swift Mud. Use of the properties, like I said, they include environmental preserves, parks, watershed preservation areas out by Lake Manatee reservoir. Like I said, positive aspects, it'll help us out with that CRS rating to Class 4. It'll take in, it'll take residential entitlements out of the 100-year flood plain, the ANAE zones that will see flooding here. And it reduces that development potential. But like I said, this, these are publicly owned properties, so we're not taking anyone's rights or whatnot, we're just acknowledging for what they are, parks and preserves. And then the reclassification of the subject properties will more accurately reflect what the zoning map should be. So there is consistency between the future land use map and the zoning map. There aren't any negative aspects and there aren't any mitigating factors. So in conclusion, it appears to be, meet the applicable policies, the comprehensive plan and the land development code. And we would request for transmittal of the zoning atlas map amendment of this request here. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Very good. With regard to the ownership of the properties?
Yes, sir.
Do, do the entities have to acknowledge this?
We did receive acknowledgement, it should be in your packet, and they are all on board with this.
Okay. And the other question, are there easements being placed over these properties or is simply the change in zoning?
Uh, there are two things. So some of the property owners, there's the Fish Profit or the Fish Nonprofit Organization off of Cortez, they have a conservation easement. Some of the folks do, it's not required, it's just what they want to do as their own, their own right. But a lot of these know it's just basically changing a color on a map, so to speak, to recognize the conservation use.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Roth.
Are you saying, in essence, that all of the current property owners will have been notified and there are no objections?
Yes, sir. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for staff? Okay.
Concise.
Thank you. We'll, we'll open it up for public comment. And again, this is not quasi-judicial, it's actually legislative, so there's no need to be sworn. So anybody who wishes to come forward, anyone at all? Seeing no one come forward? No, no. Come, come, come ahead.
I'm glad you got a sense of humor this morning. That's great. Mark Van Der, Manatee County. Yep, it's on. Well, as I understand it, you are going to take a lot of property and rezon it or try to redesignate it as conservation land. And I'd just like to say, thank you very much. I guess you do hear some of what we're saying. And Charles, I know, you know, I've been back and forth on a lot of this stuff. And I'd just like to say again, thank you very much. This is a step in the right direction overall, and it will go far to improve the general living quality of Manatee County, maybe, you know, restore it a little bit to, I don't know how, how long y'all have been around here, but it used to be a really, really nice place. And I'd like to see it get back that way again. I know we've got a lot of people coming in, there's only so much you can... Uh, I know we got a lot of people coming in, there's only, only so much you can do, and I know there's a lot of need for housing, uh, a lot of need for workforce housing, I, I appreciate that, and, and, and I am all, all for that, but again, if it's done, uh, properly, uh, it'll go a long way if our planning is, is well thought out, and our planners have a chance to actually do their job of planning like we are doing here, and again, thank you very much. Um, there is one piece of property I would like to, uh, bring to your attention, uh, both for this item and then for the subsequent item where you're gonna go to, um, recreational O S rezoning, and that is property ID five-six-zero-one-zero-zero-zero-zero. And, um, it actually is the property that, uh, the water plant owns, or is planning to use, it's twenty acres south of that property rezon on Hillwood that you just approved earlier today. That's the property where the easement is gonna put a road to a half acre parcel up to Waterline Road, okay? Now, I know we don't allow, uh, rebuttals in the, um, quasi judicial hearings, but, uh, I think some of the comments, I try to make as honestly as I can, and I think some of my statements were in fact vindicated by your staff, contrary to what the attorney said prior. But this property now, this twenty acres, should be part of this conversion to con, uh, conservation, a, and the reason why is because now you've got an easement, you've got a road right through that property. Uh, part of that easement is already on conservation property, and now you've cut that off, you've cut it off from the water plant using it with that easement.
All right.
Can't be used anymore.
All right, thank you very much, thank you. All right, we'll close public comment and open it up for staff, any, any, uh, closing comments?
Good morning again, Commissioners. Hi, Charles Andrews, uh, Principal Planner, have been sworn, or don't need to be sworn, never mind, maybe sworn at, but no. Um, so regarding, uh, Mr. Vandery's comment, uh, you'd be looking at, it's, it's, the ordinance is Z twenty-three-ten, and that parcel is actually not on there because it wouldn't be conservation, it would be, um, i, i, if it was something down the road we wanted to do, it would be like a P D P I, because the future land use amendment we did back and presented to you folks, uh, back in March, March ninth, it has a P S P one designation to recognize, uh, the water treatment facility plant, so it's actually not a conservation, it's, it's more like a common area for that facility, so that's why we didn't change the designation to conservation, if that makes sense.
Isn't the intent to utilize that property in the future?
It would be for, for a public use, but we don't.
Yeah.
For this application, it would just straight rezoned to con, so if we wanna do something down the road to P D P I for a public interest, it'd have to be site plan controlled, we'd have to show that, so if that makes sense.
It, it's part of a, it's currently part of a P S, uh...
P S P one, future land use designation, but the zoning's a little different.
That, that would have to be done through that application reopening?
Separate application for P D P I. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we'll close the public hearing and open it up for consideration, or discussion, or a motion. Uh, just a statement, I think it's great that we can put twenty-three thousand one hundred and four acres in conservation, um, there's always, uh, confusion about the designation of properties when they're vacant, so I think this is a very telling, uh, action, so I think it's a, a good thing. So, with that, anything else? If not, oh, I forgot, I gotta pull up my little thing here. So we have a motion by Mr. Turner, and a second by Mr. Smock, uh, if you would, please go ahead and vote. All right, with that, we have the results, and motion passes five to zero. All right, very good, we'll move on to item number five. Who's clapping out there? Who's clapping?
Oh, no.
All right, item number five, Ms. Leidar?
Item number five, C twenty-three-eleven and C twenty-three-twenty-one, R slash O S recreational open space zoning district rezon, Manatee County, Manatee County at all owners, and it's a rezon of more or less four thousand nine hundred twenty-six acres from conservation, A general agriculture, A-one agriculture suburban, Bill Village, R F S two, R F S three, R F S four-point-five, and R F S point-six residential single family, R D D six residential duplex, P R M professional median office, and M C M neighborhood commercial median to the R slash O S recreational open space zoning district.
Very good, and for the applicant, Mr. Andrews?
Right here, uh, Mr., uh, Chairman. Uh, good morning Commissioners. Hi, Charles Andrews again here, Principal Planner with staff, and I have a quick presentation here. Okay, so this is a county-initiated zoning atlas map amendment, or rezon on multiple zoning districts to the recreation open space zoning district, that's R O S. Uh, a few items here, so once again, this is publicly owned land, uh, the map that I'm showing you here is the Skyway Bridge Recreation Center owned by the state, uh, this is added as a parcel, uh, in the, in the, well, not to, a couple months back, they had, they were a while, a little while back, they got this added to our parcel layer, so we're able to identify this as a recreation amenity. Gamble Plantation, I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with, and then, uh, Manatee State Park as recreation open space as well. Uh, like I said, this, uh, such as the moment of the conservation rezon, this recreation open space rezon is being done to address a plan amendment that was brought before the Board, uh, on March ninth, uh, regarding the community rating system and trying to bring our, our county rating from a Class Five to a Class Four, to get that discount for flood insurance premiums going from twenty-five to thirty percent, so it's that five percent increase there for a discount, and on this amendment, it's multi, uh, excuse me, it's multiple properties on four thousand nine hundred acres, give or take. Uh, properties are owned by multiple public and nonprofit entities such as Swift Mud, uh, the state, and the county. Uh, these are parks and related historic or recreational facilities, so once again, it's just identifying existing uses that are already there. Uh, this has the potential to improve our C R S, and like I said, same thing, uh, bumping that from twenty-five to thirty percent, and this would have, uh, this would improve accuracy on our zoning map, so the zoning map and the future land use map can more consistently communicate with each other, uh, that's always a good thing. Uh, there are no negative aspects and no mitigating factors, this is one of those feel-good planning projects here, happy to be a part of. Uh, the request appears to meet applicable policies of the comprehensive plan and Land Development Code, and the request is for transmittal of the zoning atlas amendment rezon, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Very good. Um, one question, we're taking something from conservation to R O R, R O S?
Yes, sir.
What, speak to that, please, yes.
Okay, sure. So, because at the time, one item here that, um, separate thing that we brought to you folks back in March was a recreation open space zoning district. So at the time, the Land Development Code didn't have anything, they only had conservation, so when that property was changed, I think it's, um, the National Monument there, or no, excuse me, it may have been, one, a lot of properties here, but it was one of those properties that was conservation, but it's more of a, uh, recreation active and not a recreational passive use, so no more accurately represent it. Now that we have a recreation open space zoning district that was adopted and is in effect right now on the books in the Land Development Code, we felt it prudent to, um, change it over to, uh, recreation open space.
So this isn't a truly, uh, um, native, like a native habitat or wetland or something like that, it's a different type of?
It's a different type of recreational use, but it's still protective, it still takes that development potential out of that property and preserves it.
Okay, all right, Mr. Roth?
Yes, sir.
Percentage of the five thousand acres is actually private?
Is actually, I'm sorry, private? Private, privately owned?
Right.
Oh, it's, it's all, it's all publicly owned or nonprofit? Okay.
All right, any other questions for staff? Okay, with that, we'll open it up for public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to come forward?
Don't do it.
Are you running for office?
I don't, I don't know how you all do it, really.
We do it for the money.
Yeah. We do it for the pork and fast.
Mark Vandery, Manatee County, um, I guess it's, is this really quasi judicial, or is this legislative?
Legislative.
Yeah. You know, I, this one I have a problem with, y'all. You're taking land that's designated conservation, and you're changing it to recreational O S. That's not the same as conservation property. Recreational, I don't know how many dog parks in this county we need, I don't know how many golf courses in this county we need, but that's what you get with the recreational O S, and I would like to see the county have some real open discussion countywide, with all the residents, in workshops, to take this amount of property and this amount of conservation property, changing it over to R O S. That's a big change, okay? Something like this, I, I think you should, you'd hold off on, on transmitting, I think we need a lot of citizen input on something like this, this is a big deal. Now, a lot of it's good, but where you're taking conservation property and switching it to R O S, some of it is probably acceptable, but there's some of it, for example, up in the Rye Preserve area along the, uh, Lower Manatee River downstream from the dam, why would you change that to recreational O S instead of pure conservation? I don't think that's a good idea. I don't think you should do it. I, really, you need, you need more input from the citizens on this before you go forward. Uh, ultimately, a lot of it's a really good idea, it is going in the right direction, but there's enough of it that should be questioned, okay? Now, getting back to that property earlier, I was talking about the twenty acres for the water plant, right, you, you, what Charles said was that, well, they're gonna zone that, uh, P P S, okay, so that the water plant can use it. Well, y'all just cut that off from the water plant, you put an easement, a roadway right through there to that half acre property. Water plant can't get to that twenty acres now, they're cut off, okay? So why don't you go ahead and make that R O S? Might as well do something with it, otherwise, the developer's gonna say, hey, county, we've cut you off from that little twenty acres, you can't use it anymore, so how, how about selling it to us, and we'll, we'll put some, uh, more houses on it? Well, that's not a good idea either, I don't think. The water plant really needs that property, but, and it should be included in one of these, uh, rezones here countywide. That's all I have to say about it, thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, with that, we're gonna close public comment and open it up for discussion, or...
I have a question for staff, because they would know a whole lot better than me. So, R O S versus conservation, and if we were talking to the citizens, my assumption is that they would have, citizens would have a little more access to that beautiful property, is that correct? Would there be, what would be the concern from the citizens going from conservation to R O S in your experience?
Well, in, in my experience as a land use planner, uh, basically between the con, the rec open space, conservation is more of the, uh, passive recreational use, you have your blueways, you have your low impact, you know, day hiking, that kinda stuff, and then the active recreational, while it's not in the county per se, G T Bray Park, where you have active ball fields, you have lights, and you have, um, maybe some parks, for example, like the Manatee State Park, where people are, are camping, and they have, you know, dumping of, you know, refuge, you know, those, those kinda uses in there, so it's a little more impactful, um, but it still doesn't take away the enjoyment and the preservation component of the open space.
Right, okay.
So it's, it's largely the same, just minus the, the passive and more of the, you're doing more natural preservation on the conservation and more just active enjoyment on the rec open space.
Any other questions for staff?
No, I think this is good stuff, I mean, I appreciate the, the analysis, and I kind of concur that, uh, I like to have some of it as pristine, kinda more rustic, and then more activated, because there's a variety of users in the community and the visitors, so, I think, good stuff.
Yeah, I view this more of having to do with the current use, that the, uh, current designation is inconsistent, so, um, I don't think we're talking about taking land and turning it into a conservation where you'd have to, you know, plant native species, although there, there may be intent at, to do that in the, in the future, but that's not what we're talking about here, so.
And, and real thing, real quick here, Commissioner, if I, if I may, just to address some of the questions there regarding the properties, uh, a number of these properties, you have Rye Preserve, some of the uses and sometimes the grants, and, and this has been vetted, this has been probably a year in the making, that's been vetted with multiple departments such as, uh, uh, Parks and Natural Resources, like with Charlie Huntsaker's group, and looking at, sometimes grants get caught up if it's, if it's flagged as conservation, but the use is a little more this, so if you leave it as rec open space, it might allow for those, you know, Florida communities trust those kinda things to get funding, so you don't have to deal with conservation easements, or you don't have to, you know, that kinda thing, but it's still seeking to preserve, uh, these kinda uses, so, it, it does the same thing.
Okay.
We just approved twen, over twenty-six thousand acres conservation, this is forty, you know, under five thousand, so, seems like a good, good mix.
Yes, sir. And, and one final comment, sorry, is the, the comment about the P D P I, the Plan Development Public Interest, and the reason that you don't see this before you is that if we did a P D P I on all the P S P one designation, uh, future land use designation property, is that would require a site plan. It, it is a little more involved with that P D process, so right now, we're like, it doesn't prohibit anything, it just keeps going what it's going at, so that might be a separate thing down the road.
Very good, thank you. All right, with that, I'm gonna close a public hearing and open it up for discussion, deliberation, or consideration.
Let's move.
Hit the button.
I don't, I don't have a button.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Smock, and a second by Mr. Turner, if you would, please vote on your magic machine.
We're in quick draws today, Bill.
We are.
You all have someplace to go?
You're not getting it?
All right, everybody.
My, my, I don't have it.
All right, so I'm gonna call the motion, or the, the motion by voice, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, chair votes aye, motion passes five to zero, sorry. All right, with that, that can, oh, now we have it. So, motion passes five to zero. Um, with that, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, call the meeting unless there's any other business, seeing none, thank you very much.
Thanks, staff.